We'll call a June 21 city council meeting to order. Mr. Smith, will you give us the prayer pledge and back to the day?
If you assume the attitude of prayer, most races and all mighty God our Father, we come once again to say thank you for the many blessings that you restored upon us. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the citizens of this community. We ask for your to continue lead, guide, and direct us in the way that you have us ago, that all that we shall say and do be pleasing and acceptable in thy sight. In thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back to the day. On June 21, 1788, the United States Constitution went into effect as New Hampshire became the ninth state to ratify the Constitution. Back to the day.
Approval of the minutes. Any adjustments to the amendment, minutes? If not, look for motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, agenda review. From the earlier one, I know we pulled, pulled a couple of things. We pulled the, it was a business item, number four. I don't know if you don't have the newest agreement, naming rights has been pulled. I think that is it for changes.
I know we changed the, it was resolution number 20, 23-15. Originally, there was two different items on there, and this one shows the correct one of just one item, the transportation pack fee fund reserves.
Okay, all right. Okay. With that, Jay, while we got Representative Banksen, why don't we go ahead and get him up first, and then we'll do the presentations. I know he's came over here special to kind of give us the highlights from the 22, 23 session.
Well, it's so good to be back, and it's just very odd standing here, but really excited. Of course, I was waiting until the governor signed our appropriations. I just want to give you a quick report upon that because I'm really excited about this for the city of Apopka, especially as the whole district as well. All of the appropriations we tried to seek were really impactful regionally across the board. We didn't get them all across the line like I'd like to, but we've got some really great things. You know, we had a very busy session, extremely busy session, got a lot of great things done. They say, don't follow enough with your bills. Well, I had a few bad breakups because I thought there was some that would sure get across the line, but we saw a lot of things done. But let me just bring this very quickly. First of all, the Apopka Regional Trail Connection, we were able to get $2 million for that. Very excited about that. Of course, you know, city of Apopka's Active Transportation Network Implementation Project will allow you, the city, along with the city and county partners, to build connections to establish regional trails throughout the region. Project will run from Lester Road in Apopka to Neighborhood Lakes Trailhead in Lake County, which will complete the trail from Claremont into Lake County, into Orange County, back into Lake County, ultimately finishing in Sanford at Seminole County. The project will complete the bike trail around Lake Apopka for both Orange and Lake Counties, and the Trail Connector will allow trail users to access Lake County from other trail points. What's exciting about this, of course, is something that we've been working on forever, and that's our ecotourism. And so the opportunities that are there, I believe it's really going to continue to make this a real appeal, and so it'll bring economic benefit to the region here. So I'm excited about that. Secondarily, the Apopka Wakava Springs Regional Aquifer Recharge and Flood Protection for the city of Apopka, this is what you presented, and we were able to get $2.5 million funded for that. This is a joint regional partnership between the city of Apopka, Orange County, Seminole County, Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, and St. John's River Water Management District. The funding will support design permitting and construction of a permanent stormwater treatment system to reduce flooding around, listen to this wonderful list, Lake Page, Lake Pleasant, Lake Border, Lake Cortez, Piedmont Blue, Jackson, and McDate. And so all of those issues, we were really having a lot of flooding issues. Very excited that we've gotten that through. Modern water quality pre-treatment will be installed to significantly reduce nitrogen, phosphorus, and other pollutants in the stored stormwater prior to use for irrigation and ultimately discharge back into the aquifer. Of course, that's going to help all of our goals, BMAP and everything. The project will delete excess water from flowing into the aquifer and cap drainage wells. Number three, very excited about this one, Lake Apopka Restoration Efforts. For, it was already in the legislature for residual $5 million, and for some reason that got cut off. It was first cut in half and then completely cut off. So we're able to go in there. Senator Baxley was a real help on the other side to make this happen, but to restore that $5 million. Now, it's not residual yet, but that's something I'm going to go back and try and get that back in. And the reason why, of course, St. John's River Waters Management District has made substantial progress restoring our lake in the past 25 years. Unfortunately, 30% of Florida's fourth largest lake, our Lake Apopka, is clogged with potentially catastrophic invitation, infestation of the invasive aquatic weed hydrella, and is threatening to undo hundreds of millions of dollars of restoration efforts. So it's foolish to spend that money and then only to have it grow back and just throw that money away and waste it. And besides that, going forward with these monies, they'll be able to keep that from happening and gain ground in this. It's a challenge because, of course, the sportmen, they kind of like the hydrella because the ducks like the hydrella. But there are other plants that are not invasive, that are natural, that will draw them, maybe not quite the, you know, the candy bar that they're looking for, but it will draw them. So it will really benefit both, and it won't destroy those who enjoy the hunting aspect, but it will really protect our lake and get us back to that pristine, you know, up into the night, into the 1950s, it was one of the number one freshwater fishing lakes in America. So again, it can become a draw. All of the restoration fits into that ecotourism focus, and again, will help with development going down the road. Despite modest recent efforts, Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has been unable to curtail the hydrella invasion. And let me jump on down here. But they will replace the invasion hydrella with native aquatic vegetation. So that'll be one of the main focuses there. And finally, number four, and I think I saw Commissioner Moore, is she still here? This was something that she was really pulling for. We were able to get this. This is the Orange County West Orange Trail Phase Four, $640,080 there, but that will help to connect that between Apopka, the Orange Trail on Rock Springs Road to the entrance of Wakava State Park entrance. And again, this is just tremendous for our region. The two things I'm disappointed that we didn't get. Number one was our workforce housing project on Cleveland. And I was very surprised because I thought that one was going to sail through. But again, it's just, it's part of the mix. You have, you know, people from all over the state vying for these funds. We had a tremendous amount of funds and resources that are there. I'm confident going forward because President Pasadena in the Senate, this was one of her key issues that she wanted to press for. So there is funding there, and that we're looking to maybe try and find another avenue that the funding that's already provided, so we don't have to go back in and ask for it out of the budget. So we're going to press for that because we know the need for that around here. The other thing, and I again, thought this would sail right through, and that was something that Seminole County Sheriff Lima had projected to use the computer aided dispatch system. We at Apopka used that same system, and so I was trying to get $300,000 to finish that program. They've done it for the last three years. This was the final phase of that. And so I called the governor's office and was talking with them to ask, why is this not going through? This is on the chopping block, and really tried to advocate for that. But they said it's never before been out of the state budget, and they just didn't see that, they thought it needed to go back to the same silos that they got it here locally. So that didn't get across the line. That's something that's utilized again in our city and many cities. We want them to be able to communicate so they can be most effective. So other than that, again, so many bills, I felt our heads were swimming, over 1,900 bills were filed. Talk about reading. We had a lot to do. I was able to be a part of getting across the finish line, 42 different bills. We are limited to only seven bills and a piece. Senate has an unlimited number. And so it's just, just an exciting opportunity to keep fighting, and that's what I want to do. We've really been doing a lot of legislative updates in the region here, and I really am turning my focus now towards the next, our next session and legislation that we want to do, and there's some great things I think we'll really work for here. Anxious to hear from the public, the things that matter to us, because being a representative, I really take that seriously. I'm supposed to be our voice there, not just Apopka, our whole region, Orange and part of Seminole County as well. But just excited about that. I thought you would be too. We got some good and decent funds there, and I think it'll really help with some of the projects there, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Representative Banksen?
When is the check coming?
Well, he just finally signed it this last week, so we'll get on that.
No, no questions. Thank you for your efforts. I mean, that's a great list of appropriations that were approved and vastly needed, so thank you so much.
Wonderful. Well, I look forward to all the new projects that you all come up with and see what we can do at the state level.
Yeah, the last thing is, remember that September is the first committee week, so we've got to think a lot sooner if we've got things that we want to ask the representative to help us with is, it's the early year for session, which starts January instead of March, so.
And that will make this year much easier. Last year, of course, we were thrown right into a special session dealing with insurance. Would love to talk more about that, anybody has questions. We did some great work on dealing with the root cause, but it's taking a bit for that to end up being manifest. So I understand, I feel your pain because I feel it too, but some great things were done there that I'm really excited, and we'll be doing more. So again, please get that information to me, things that you know now because I have time to try and work on and get those things crafted and get them first in line, and it makes a big difference. So thank you. Love our city and glad to be a representative.
Thank you, Representative. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
You bet.
Saved me from having to do it under the mayor's report. Okay, first up, Active Transportation Network Study Update. We don't, Emily could not be here tonight, but we've got Patrick Panza and PJ Smith.
Good evening. Patrick Panza from Bike Walk Central Florida, 100 East Pine Street, Suite 11074 Orlando, Orlando, Florida, 32801. There we go. Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your time for having us here today and for letting us participate in the Apopka Active Transportation Network Study with your staff. As I said, my name is Patrick Panza. I'm the Programs Director at Bike Walk Central Florida. I'm here today with PJ Smith from X Geographic. He will be also participating in the presentation to give some information for you tonight. So let's see here. All right, so we kicked this project off a little bit ago. What we're here to do, to do, what we're here tonight to do is to provide you a bit of an update of where we're at to date, all right? And the purpose of the Apopka Active Transportation Network Study is multifaceted. Ultimately, what the goal of this is, is to empower your city government and your city residents to really leverage your infrastructure, present and future, to participate in active transportation, whether that be for recreation, for commute, for leisure, et cetera. So there's multiple parts to this. First and foremost, it's about every single facet of life within Apopka, right? So it's not just honing in on one piece. We want to use your trail infrastructure as a catalyst for economic development, and we're going to do this through a process of multiple pieces in this study. We're looking at identifying a signature trail corridor, multiple signature trail corridors, so that we can continue to identify and prioritize those connections to your, to the regional network. We all know the momentum that's happening right now with active transportation, recreation, trails development, and we want the city of Apopka to be positioned to leverage those opportunities that you have here geographically and make sure that your residents are able to really take advantage of their position and enjoy the regional trail network as well. We want to also look closer to home and identify comfort countermeasures to increase the number of resident people walking, biking, and rolling in the city of Apopka. It's not, sometimes it's not just enough to have the trail there, but we have to make sure it's comfortable and safe to use. So we'll also be looking at safety countermeasures to also enhance, further enhance your active transportation network. We'll also be taking a look at developing some preliminary trail standards and policies for use for your staff and your government to work with developers and planners alike to ensure that your future infrastructure is up to a level and a standard that provides a great level of service to its users. All of this is pointed at guiding future trail development along prioritized corridors and essentially activating your existing infrastructure and guiding and prioritizing your future infrastructure pieces to make sure that the city of Apopka has a very, very vibrant active transportation network. So let me take a quick step back and provide a bit of a definition for what an active transportation network really is. Essentially, it's any piece of infrastructure that facilitates and accommodates travel, whether that be for recreation, or leisure, or commute, in a non-motorized vehicle. So of course, our heads go straight to thinking about trails, right? We love the trails in our, in our communities neighborhoods. We're also looking at additional pieces of infrastructure and see how this can be leveraged. Wider sidewalks, bike lanes, standard sidewalks, because we're not just talking about cyclists, we're talking about all those who bike, walk, and roll in your community. There have been multiple pieces of the project that are coming together, and we have a lot of partners helping us out with that. Go back there one. So we've identified a number of stakeholders to work through us, with us through this process. We've got them all up on the screen here, a wide variety of partners, of course, from the city of Apopka staff itself, us at Bike Walk Central Florida, and PJ at X Geographic, but also Orange County Government, Metro Plan Orlando, the city of Acoe, Winter Garden, the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and Florida Department of Transportation. Now, they're helping us out in a lot of ways. We're meeting with them regularly. We're able to bounce a lot of ideas off of them. We're able to get and gather a lot of standards and best practices to make sure that we employ during this process, and we're checking in with them fairly regularly throughout this project to make sure that we're staying on track. The main components of this is we're pulling together a compilation of existing conditions, right, so that we can accurately understand and describe the existing active transportation network. We've engaged in public engagement efforts, and we're going to be using that to sort of backcheck our preliminary gaps and opportunities analysis and push that forward into more of an implementable plan, along with all of those types of recommendations that I went over earlier. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to PJ for a little while. He's going to run you through your existing network and conditions. I'll come back up after he's done, and I'll talk to you about what we've learned so far from our public engagement efforts, and that will be what we have for you tonight.
Hey, how's it going? PJ Smith with X Geographic. It's actually interned with the city of Apopka in 2009, so it's good to be back. And then before that, I lost you guys quite a few times in football over the years. I played at Dr. Phillips, so I got that going for me. But I'm going to run over just kind of briefly the existing conditions analysis. Basically, what this is, is we're compiling just a ton of map data from a ton of sources to make sure that we're doing this right. And I'll run through quite a few maps, but as part of this, basically, we compiled all the trail plans from all the counties, cities, and not only trails, but also bicycle lanes, what's existing and what's proposed from all the cities, not only in Apopka but around Apopka, all the regionally funded trail networks. You can see on this slide right here, you have the West Orange Trail Extension, which will go north, as was mentioned earlier, to connect to the Wakava Trail. So there's a lot in terms of what's existing, what's in the ground, but also what is planned. And this map shows the northern portion of the city, Lester Road, basically north up to the 429. So basically, as part of this study, we've, we've compiled all this data, land use data, transportation data, and we're doing all of our due diligence right now. We've also gone out to the community and held a community workshop, and we have a survey that Patrick is going to be talking about. So we're basically in the due diligence phase right now. Here you have the southern portion of the city, and actually, big picture, let me take a step back. It's really awesome to be working in the city of Apopka, and I know the residents will be able to appreciate this because, I mean, Rock Springs Run, Wakava Springs, Lake Apopka Restoration Area, downtown Apopka, right in the middle of all this stuff. We have such an opportunity to do something really special in terms of connecting ecological points of interest, but also leveraging economic development through not just riding your car, but through having, you know, really comfortable shaded bicycle paths that people can get from point A to point B, as Patrick said, whether it's for leisure, whether it's getting to work, but mostly for leisure, really. In terms of Apopka and just all the assets that you have, on this map here, you can see that you've got the green or all your existing trails. So right up going kind of through the middle, right, right there, you have the West Orange Trail, which is just a great starting point for us. And then Pam with the city and your planning department has done a really great job of enticing developers at year zero to build trails while they're building their developments so that piece by piece, this network is beginning to come through. And you can see that here with all these little segments of green that are being built. That's Pam and the staff just doing an awesome job. Throughout the region, I work in the three-county region, 2.3 million people. I haven't seen anything like this in terms of a city really just doing those incremental builds at year zero and having developers be participants in that. So that's great. Big picture, on a statewide scale, you guys are also in a perfect position because if you can see there, that in orange and red, that's the coast-to-coast trail corridor, which will go from west coast of Florida all the way to the east coast of Florida. And then the spine connecting right up through there is the West Orange Trail. So we have the ability through this project to not only connect the West Orange Trail to the coast-to-coast trail, but to potentially create a loop or a nice network within the city. And that's on the trail, that's kind of on the trail side, so 10 to 14-foot wide trails. But then on a second level down from that, you have your trail network. We also will be identifying corridors for bicycle lanes, so on the side of the street, and then also signed routes for bicyclists. So if you kind of take it big to small, you start with the trails, work your way down to bike lanes, and then signed routes. And again, it's about taking cars off the road and making comfortable routes for people to get from point A to point B. As part of this, I won't get too into it, lot of, lot of maps, lot of stuff going on, but we do have all of your points of interest. We're basically working from a massive database of points of interest, park spaces, again, all the infrastructure that's in the ground right now, and we're trying to put it all together so that we can efficiently connect all of the right places in the right way. And actually, as you can see here, I don't want to get too ahead of myself, but from Lake Apopka North to the newly developed Kelly Park Road area up there, there's actually a gap in terms of, if you were to look at this and see it almost as a loop, it's kind of hard to explain without pointing, but there really is the ability to create a loop system, a loop trail system through the city of Apopka, which is really exciting. So as part of this, we're looking at your major commercial centers, downtown Apopka, Advent Health, and then some of the future development that's coming in, such as the Floridian Town Center, a lot of your new multifamily development, the Kelly Park Interchange. So all of this is being prognosticated. We know what's coming in the future, so how do we build the trails now to accommodate even the future development that's going to be occurring? Oh, perfect. Thank you. Oh, perfect. As part of this, just more due diligence right here, what we want to do is create comfortable and safe routes for people. So we have all sorts of data that says where bicycle and pedestrian crashes are happening, where they've been happening over the last 10 years, so we build off of that data to identify routes that are safe for residents. And as part of this, we identify level of traffic stress, working with Metro Plan Orlando. I do a lot of work on the regional scale, so we're able to take a lot of the risk factors that we see on the regional level and apply it directly to this project. In this map, you can see the bicycle and pedestrian crash hotspots that have taken place in the city over the last 10 years. And as part of this map, just kind of a blanket statement here, we're going to be avoiding some of those major road corridors like 441 and 436. We could potentially have some proposals for some wide sidewalks, but in terms of trail networks, we really want to stay kind of on those lower-stress roadways. And this is actually pretty, I'm glad this map is in here because also, you know, in Florida, it's so hot riding around on your bike in Florida, so we're also taking an inventory of the current shading along all of these routes, right? That's super important because there's research that shows that, you know, trip-distance biking is extended if it's a more comfortable, more shaded route, and if there's destinations to go to. So as part of our plan, just big picture, we're going to identify all these new potential routes, again, not all over the place, but the best potential routes, best bang for the buck. And then once we have all of those, we're going to say, okay, now how, where are the best places to plant trees, to have bicycle racks next to the trail system to kind of go full circle and make it, you know, just a full plan? Make sure I get to everything on this slide. Again, the trail design and placement standards. We're also looking at future roadway projects, widenings and all that kind of stuff so that, you know, if you widen your roads, let's take that into account now so that we know what's coming in the future. And then gaps and opportunities, really leveraging economic development through that active transportation and enhancing ecotourism. So those two sides, ecotourism, economic development, Apopka's in a perfect position to do that kind of stuff. And here on this slide, you can see that the purple blobs are kind of your economic activity centers, and your green blobs there are kind of your environmental kind of points of interest and cultural points of interest. So how do we kind of create a network that connects all of those efficiently? And you can see right there in the aqua, kind of that blob up on the middle left, that's one of the primary gaps that we've identified as part of our early analysis, and that would really connect the Lake Apopka Restoration Area to the north, to that Kelly Park area. Right-of-way, we're going to be looking at a ton of this stuff so that if we're, we're not just drawing lines all over the city, we're actually looking at the available right-of-way next to the road so that we know that everything that we're presenting and pitching basically as part of this plan is feasible and in cost-effective. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, PJ. So what PJ is really kind of putting across there that I want to kind of summarize is that I think it's very important to understand, not understand, but be very explicit about the difference of what we're doing here. This is a study. This is a study as opposed to a visioning plan. We are very, very focused, and with our conversations with Pam and the staff, we understand the goal of this study is actionable items, right? So that's why we're paying such very close attention to the existing conditions. It's not just about identifying a point A to point B gap, for instance. It's about, well, what's on the ground there now today? What is the capacity for the city to address that gap? And what's the reality of the built environment there today, right? So the next piece that comes into making a plan very actionable is, of course, public feedback. And so we want to make sure that the information that we've pulled together in existing conditions, the ideas that we've bounced off with our steering committee and with staff, and our preliminary take and look at the gaps and opportunities. We want to make sure that they resonate and that they're informed by members of your public, users of your active transportation network today. So we've done a number of items and efforts to make sure that we can get in touch with the public. We distributed 750 postcards to over 330 businesses in the City of Apopka. We had a community workshop on May 18th. Now, admittedly, turnout was not ideal at that workshop. We would have loved to have had more people there, but we definitely enjoyed engaging with those that did participate and show up. That's certain, we've had an online survey open. We had originally set a end date for that survey right around mid-June. But we've decided to keep it open and continue pushing this out through our avenues, through our Bike Walk Central Florida's weekly newsletter, which reaches over 4,000 people, through our social media outlets. And we're continuing to work with staff to get the word out about that online survey so we can get some more input. But I wanted to make sure that we would be able to provide you a summary of that public input to date. And so we'll run through that here today. This is just very high-level summary items of some initial insights that we've pulled from the public feedback to date. First and foremost, people like to walk in Apopka. This is what we've heard so far. We asked a series of questions in this survey that was really designed for us to truly understand not only the way that your residents and visitors use your active transportation network, but how and why? Where, what are your origins? What are your destinations? What's your method of transportation? What would you prefer to do and what would you like to do? So we know so far that people like to walk in Apopka. Compared to learning habits of respondents of how often they bike in Apopka versus how often they walk in Apopka. And we also asked, how often do you row in Apopka? Which we defined as essentially small things with wheels. I'm kind of cribbing that from, I think it's the neck to report, or maybe the ash to report. I'm sorry. Small things with wheels. Think about scooters, wheelchairs, micro-mobility devices, okay? So those are three main categories. Walking in Apopka is in the clear lead. Often, three to five days per week, that's the most popular response so far. And we think that's really great. As we all know, Florida in general, especially central Florida, is not exactly well-known for being the friendliest place to walk. But we're glad that your residents are currently engaged in that activity. We want to make sure that they can continue to do it and do it more often. Next insight that we've gathered, your residents prefer to use active transportation for recreation and exercise. And this would be in contrast to specifically using that for commutes. And no surprise here, really. We live in communities that are slightly more spread out than are more dense urban corridors, right? So commuting by active transportation has not quite really taken root yet. But it's really, really great to see that your residents are capitalizing on the opportunities of living in and around Apopka to use active transportation for recreation and exercise. We know that that's a great part of a healthy lifestyle. It's great for public health. It's great for mental health. So we want to continue to use the infrastructure to promote that type of activity. The way we gathered this insight is we asked specifically, what is the primary purpose when you walk in Apopka or bike in Apopka or roll in Apopka? And in all three categories, essentially, the most popular response thus far has been exercise and leisure and recreation. The other opportunities they had there was they could let us know if they were commuting to work and/or school, shopping or running errands, or if walking, biking or rolling was their primary means of transportation. We have actually had a few of those responses so far, so that's great to see also. Our next insight, as far as connections. The respondents thus far would prefer to go to parks and recreational places, which winds up perfectly with the previous set of responses there. So the options that we gave in the survey for this or that are still active were parks in terms of where do you want the active transportation network to provide connections to? So these are the destinations, parks and recreation centers, regional trail networks, environmental areas, downtown, activity and shopping centers, schools and major employment areas. So you can see right there at the top, the two most popular choices were parks and recreation centers and regional trail networks. The example we provided was the Coast to Coast Trail. This is a really important piece of insight for us moving forward because this informs us as to what's needed from your residents for the future of your active transportation network. Helps with identifying opportunities, helps with sifting through numerous gaps that we might find in the existing network. And it helps also, as you move forward into implementation, it helps with prioritization as well. The next insight there, priorities for the active transportation network. Very similar to the previous question, we asked, what do you want to see in your active transportation network in terms of amenities and features? And we put kind of a laundry list in there. We wanted it to be kind of a free-for-all, right? There were a couple that we think we threw in there that we were guessing would be popular and some that we might have been surprised with if they're popular. But the results so far is that what's being prioritized by the people who have taken the survey so far is safety features at crossings and intersections and path width. And then, as we move down the list, we see lighting, shaded rest areas. Some of the less popular options were bike repair stations and bike parking. Now, this was actually a little surprising to us right off the bat. Safety features at crossings and intersections, that's a shoe-in, right? So that's at the top of the list there. Path width, I don't think any of us really kind of expected that to be up as high as it is. And so this is something I think we're going to do a little bit more investigation into because this is pretty critical in terms of decision-making for the future. When it comes to identifying what type of infrastructure you're going to want in the future, how you're going to fund that. Because as we all know, there are big differences in terms of project scope, right? When you're looking at a six-foot wide sidewalk versus an eight-foot wide sidewalk or a 14-foot wide multi-use trail. So this is very intriguing to us. We're going to continue to dig deeper into this and see what kind of additional insights we can gather. So that's just a general overview so far of some of the major insights that we've pulled from public input. We're going to use these essentially to backcheck the work that we've done thus far, okay? So I want to make sure that we all know here what our next steps are in this project and in the study. Primarily, as we move toward formalizing the gaps and opportunities analysis, the public input is going to be our most valuable tool in that, okay? We're coupling that with all of the massive research and investigation that PJ has helped us do and has led in terms of existing conditions. And he's given us a lot of insights to work with as well. As we move past that step, we'll be moving toward creating essentially this series of recommendations to bounce off of staff and our steering committee in terms of policy, right? In terms of standards, if we can gain some of those, gather some of those insights as to amenities and features and destinations. We can really use those to power the set of recommendations that come out of the study. And then, we'll work to finalize those and we'll package this into, like I said, a very actionable report from this study that, of course, is just kind of built out of our own analysis and input from the public and kind of backchecked against all of it. So we'll be working through the summer, of course, should have switched to this a little bit, sir. We'll be pulling together all of those analyses and we'll be pulling together a final presentation and report for you at the council. And we'll be working with staff through that the whole time, of course. And then, of course, we move on to implementation. So that is what we have for you today. If you have any questions or feedback, we'd be happy to hear them and help out with them as much as possible.
Any questions for Patrick? So you say you're going to be working through, can you go back to that June, July and August? Where exactly will you be targeting of community feedback?
Right, so the community feedback, we had originally set up for the project timeline was one public workshop, which we have completed. The survey, according to our original plan, we thought that we would have gotten a little bit more input on that to date. So we're going to keep it open for as long as possible, we're going to keep pushing that. I don't have an end date on that yet, to be realistic. I want to continue gathering as much feedback as I can. Necessarily, we're going to have to probably freeze, frame the results from that somewhere toward the end of July so that we can make sure that we're pulling all of those insights in and through our recommendations for the final report.
Where were you marketing the survey? Like, is that something that you, that's, I didn't see it.
Okay, well, I think that's something that we need to address, for sure. We need to do some more efforts in getting it out there. Thus far, we've been advertising this on our social media outlets, Bike Walk Central Florida. As I mentioned, we've been weekly providing a link in our weekly newsletter, which reaches about 4,000 people in central Florida. We had 750 flyers with a QR code directly to the survey that we distributed in 30 some odd businesses around Apopka. I think we could do another run of those pretty easily and get those out there again. And I think actually, through some other Bike Walk efforts, we have some community outreach that we may be doing through our Best Foot Forward program in the area. And we'll also couple, we'll probably have some flyers at those two as well, so we can continue to talk with people.
Are you hitting large communities? Because I know that we've got large communities that have big HOA meetings, especially if a lot of the response is more recreational, leisure-minded. Your probably going to be, your audiences could be more neighborhoods close to recreation like you've seen thus far. So I may want to hook up with different HOAs as well.
Definitely, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, did we, did we put anything with this survey on our utility newsletter that we get every month?
We have, we can do that next month. It's, well, I need to do that next week. So another thing I was thinking along those lines, if we could get your brochure with the QR code, let's take it out for 4th of July. We'll have 5,000 to 10,000 people. So if you can, we can get the brochure there. And I would even have some of your, hey, if you'd get with Radley, I'd like to put a couple of the maps that they had up just so people can visualize and then have the brochure with the QR code. They can see what, you know, what you guys have accomplished so far. And then, hey, you know, fill this out if you see things that you, you know, that we're lacking or, you know, or you want to add to that system. That would be, that would be great.
And I'd certainly be willing. We could, I mean, this isn't static. I can come up to City Hall any day, anytime. And if more, if we could do an open kind of workshop and I can just be there with the maps. And if more residents want to come up, I can certainly help in that regard.
Problem is, it's better to go to them than it is, they're not going to come to us. We got to go to them. So I think, you know, 4th of July would be a great opportunity. We could put them up in multiple locations, you know, obviously one at the front and then maybe one down toward the amphitheater itself that we could.
Like we did with the students.
What's that?
Like we did with the students.
Yeah, exactly.
That worked everywhere. We just didn't have the timeline before doing all that stuff and then going to our public meetings. So we're kind of doing it on the back. So we'll be hitting a lot more of those kind of opportunities. There's a lot of stuff around town.
Super, thank you.
Anything else, Chris?
Can we get a copy of the presentation?
I have it all, you know it too.
Thank you.
I was going to ask for the same thing. And then also, if you can, just email us in that same email, the link to the survey. Because we can all just share it on our social media sites as well, and that'll help to definitely push it out there.
I thought that it was sent to you already, but I guess my mistake that it didn't get there.
It's okay. Perfect. Appreciate you guys' efforts, too.
No problem.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right, next up, Bobby Howell is going to go over Senate Bill 102 for us. It's a, it's a, I don't see.
Good evening, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. And it's good to be back before you after a little hiatus of about a year from the city. So good to be back here. I'll be talking about Senate Bill 102, otherwise known as the Live Local Act. And this was approved by the state legislature and signed into law by Governor DeSantis on March 29, 2023. Passed unanimously in the state senate and passed in the House by a vote of 103 to 6. And the Live Local Act addresses a variety of housing policies, including funding, taxes, tax incentives, and substantial amendments to the state's housing strategies such as providing incentives to developers to construct affordable and workforce housing in the state. The act is being touted as the largest investment for housing efforts in Florida's history. And this is applicable to all local governments in the state and is effective next Saturday, June 1st. So we're about nine days away. July 1st, I'm sorry. Just seeing if you were paying attention. Under the Live Local Act, local governments cannot regulate the use, density or height of an affordable housing development if a rental project is a multifamily or mixed-use residential in any area zone, commercial, industrial or mixed-use. And with that, at least 40% of the units are affordable for houses up to 120% of area median income or AMI for at least 30 years. In this area, for an individual, AMI is about $69,000 and change. For a family of four, it's about $99,000. If the property is zoned mixed-use, at least 65% of the square footage of the project is, has to be residential. And local governments cannot require development meeting those requirements, such as being in applicable locations to obtain a zoning or land use change, special exception, conditional use approval variance, comprehensive plan amendment for use, density or height. So what that means is basically, local governments must administratively approve the projects, meaning that no public hearings can be required if they satisfy that criteria. Has to be approved administratively only per state law. Under the Live Local Act, affordable housing developments are entitled to the following: use. So you're allowed to build multifamily rental or mixed-use within commercial, industrial or mixed-use zoning with or without a comprehensive plan amendment or a zoning change. Density, multifamily is entitled to the highest density allowed on any land within the city. And in our comprehensive plan, you're allowed up to 25 units an acre under HDR 25. So in theory, a development could go up to 25 units per acre, no questions asked, per the law. And under height, multifamily development is allowed to be constructed at the highest height for a commercial residential development located within the jurisdiction, within the jurisdiction within one mile of the site, the development, or three stories, whichever is higher. So we have here in the mixed-use downtown zone, residential can go up to 75 feet. So a project a mile from here could be 75 feet in height. And in no case shall a local government require a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, special exception variance to allow the use of building height or density. The maps that I'll go through show locations that are eligible for Live Local. This is the zoning properties. There are about 353 parcels that are selected. And keep in mind, some of them are already platted residential lots, so that wouldn't be applicable. This is future land use parcels, which Live Local could be applicable to. And this is a map illustrating properties which we feel would be best suited for residential development based on past site plans that have been approved for multifamily. The average site is about four acres, so each of these parcels are four acres in size or greater. So you can see it's a good chunk of the city, north, south, east and west, where this could be applicable out. In addition to allowing zoning and use restrictions or not allowing those restrictions, the act provides up to $811 million for affordable housing programs in the state. And this funds, these funds are divided into State Housing Initiative Partnership, the SHIP program, State Apartment Incentive Loan Program, the Sale Program, Hometown Hero Program, Inflation Response Program, and the Live Local Tax Donation Program. And also, $100 million in a new tax credit program is included as well. There are property tax incentives that are contained within the bill. I'll just go over a couple of them. The first is a nonprofit ad valorem exemption. And what this does, it allows a nonprofit that owns 100% of the land who enters into a 99-year ground lease with an affordable housing developer to have an exemption added to their land. This would be like a land trust or something along those lines. And then the next is the missing middle, which allows ad valorem tax exemptions for properties and multifamily projects up to 75% of the assessed value if they provide housing to persons or families who annual household income is greater than 80%, but not more than 120% AMI. So 80% in this area of AMI for an individual is $46,480. For a four-person household, that's $66,320. And that's considered low income per the stats. And then, as I mentioned earlier, 120% of AMI is $69,000 and change for an individual family of four, $99,480. To receive the exemption, a property owner must submit to the property appraiser. To receive the exemption, a property owner must submit to the property appraiser an application along with a certification notice from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by March 1st of each year. And all developers can receive a property tax exemption on the portions of their property to use for affordable housing, if the property is qualified, including market rate developers. So that's the act in a nutshell. Kind of summarize it by, kind of stay tuned, a lot's going to play out, there's a lot we'll learn as it kind of starts to get implemented, starting on July 1st. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Bobby?
I said, 75 feet, what does that convert to for stories or floors?
About seven stories, eight stories.
Wow.
You know. And up in the Kelly Park, you're allowed up to 10 stories. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Can we have a copy of the summary, as opposed to this?
Oh, the stuff that's in your packet?
Yes.
Well, I thought you might have trouble sleeping at night, so that's why that was in there.
The chap was walking.
I'll send you the summary. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby, appreciate that. Okay. Let's see. Next up, have a proclamation. Rough week last week, as you all know, that Edward Bass passed away. I read this proclamation at the funeral on Saturday, but I thought, you know, given some folks that weren't there, I wanted to read it today, tonight as well, for the public record. Edward was a great individual, you know, served finance, in finance team, and then finance director, and then as my city administrator, and was loved by all, not only, you know, the folks that worked with him, but also the community, and will definitely be missed. And they'll never make another Edward Bass, that's for sure. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Edward Derwood Bass II was born on July 23, 1972, to Edward and Gail Bass; and whereas Edward was born and raised in Eustis, Florida; and whereas after graduating from Eustis High School, Edward attended the University of Florida, where he received his Bachelor of Science in Accounting; and whereas after college, Edward began his career with the Department of Management Services as an accountant, and then the Florida Public Services Commission as an auditor regulating utility companies; and whereas Edward then went to work for the City of Apopka for 12 years, starting as the Assistant Finance Director, and eventually becoming the Finance Director, a position he served us for 10 years; and whereas in 2014, he became Director of Resource Management for Seminole County, where he managed the budget, purchasing, risk management, and special assessments; and whereas in 2018, Edward returned to the City of Apopka to become the City Administrator under my administration, a position he served until his passing; and whereas Edward was a Certified Government Finance Officer by the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, and Certified Public Accountant by the State of Florida; and whereas Edward loved going to Gator Games and NASCAR races with friends. He also enjoyed country music and traveling; and whereas he was an intelligent man with a great memory and quick wit, able to work with many different personalities, always a gentleman and diplomat; and whereas Edward passed away on Saturday, June 10, 2023; and whereas Edward was preceded in death by his mother, Gail, he's survived by his father, Ed Bass, sister Ginger, brother-in-law Joe, nephews Andrew and Matthew, as well as many friends, including the Hobbit family, and the entire staff from the City of Apopka. And whereas we gather here today, Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at City Council, to remember my dear friend and yours, Edward, he will be sorely missed. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby recognize Edward Bass, and ask all citizens to join me in honoring his memory. So, one of the things I would, would like to do in memory of Edward is name the conference room, the big administrative conference room in his honor, and have a plaque there to always remember what fine work he did for the City of Apopka. And so with that.
Absolutely.
A nice tribute.
Okay.
It's a nice tribute.
Thank you. All right, public comment period. Susan?
Okay. Dr. Ove. I think we need to have the next picnic there. It's beautiful. Except, this is what it looked like January 2018. It was maintained by, and dug out regularly, and mowed regularly, and this isn't forwarding. And then December 2018, it started looking like this. Started building up. And November 2019, it started filling in. We no longer had Mr. Borjas and Mr. Jones taking care of it. Started filling in some more, and this is very against the law. We have to keep this clean. Eutrophication is ensuing. And I, nine months ago, I came to the city and asked for an inventory of all of our stormwater ponds, and this is not working. And I didn't get that inventory, and I asked for a list of the maintenance that's been done, that has to be done regularly. And this is not working, so I need more time. It starts filling in. Now, the first time I heard eutrophication was my first day of, this one is a side view of that same one, and the lake is, you can see that all the bush hogging that Melvin used to do is not getting done. The compliance supervisor from St. John's Water Management District gave me this, and I sent Susan the pamphlet this came out of, that tells you how to maintain in case somebody new has to be hired. And those pictures, that you can't see the weir anymore, or the stream, and how the water has to exit. So that money that the state is going to give us to help maintain the lakes and keep them from getting polluted, has nowhere to go, because we don't have any ponds left. Because the inventory that was just done in March, that I asked for back in September 27th of last year, was just done in March, and, but the maintenance hasn't been done, so none of this has anywhere to go. And this is, nine months later, is hurricane season. Now, looky here. According to the Orange County Property Appraisers clip of the satellite view, this was January of 2022. It's almost full, three quarters full. Here it is now, okay? Almost, and this is eutrophication. My college professor, when I was 14, my first college class, said, "Eutrophication." He watched his lake in front of his house go from a beautiful crystal-clear lake to a cattle pasture in five years due to eutrophication. And that was mentioned earlier, the nitrogen buildup in the water. Now what you need to do is send out RFPs, order immediate RFPs, to order, and I sent Susan also, a list of local people and statewide people that can come dig this out and clear all these lakes, because Mr. Earl determined that most of our ponds are completely clogged and severely done. Here's the one on Lust Road. Looks wonderful, doesn't it? You should be able to see down to the bottom of these. And you can't, they're clogged. This is at the entrance of the Wildlife Drive. This is the one down on Hawthorne.
Okay, can you get us that list, and we'll, I'll have, I'll make sure-
Yes, and this is-
We have a new, a new person that will take care of it.
Okay, this is the citizens' need. We need immediate clearing of all stormwater ponds and drains. We need publicly accessible extant inventory of the stormwater system on the internet.
Okay.
Including past and future maintenance reports, and we need publicly report noncompliance to the citizens and the St., I ran, I didn't have all my time.
Okay.
And the citizens and the St. John's Water Management District needs to be, have their noncompliance now and upon correction. They already know about this, and so does the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
Thank you, Dr. Ove, appreciate it.
Dennis New?
Good evening. It's been stated that all it takes is three votes of the commission to approve something. Words that have stuck in my head, well, I question if that's all it takes. Then why did the property that was discussed next to the Alonso Williams Park, which was voted on to be used as a parking lot, instead of getting it away for affordable housing, get mentioned again, and stated that it could be parking and/or two or three homes? What political favors does this city owe anyone? Or is it just one person pushing this change? The vote to use it as a parking lot was there so there would be ample space for events. Next, it's my understanding that an expenditure of more than $20,000 requires the approval of the council. As well, it's my understanding that the speech instructor that was hired to help the fire chief was building an invoice system to circumvent the $20,000 requirement. The cost has now exceeded the $20,000 limit, and appears to not be a good investment. Basicing that on Mr. Wyland's updates presented here at each meeting. Items that should be and could be addressed, and everyday items by every other fire department around the state, without involving their city council or upper management. Items that have been standard practice in the fire service for years. Now rumor has it that the mayor has hired the past city attorney on a contract basis. Are the billings going to be like the speech instructor, and broken down below the 20K threshold? Just how much money has the past attorney cost to so fire? Where's the progress on getting the charter question answered by a higher authority, not by another attorney? A higher authority meaning the Secretary of State or a judge. That question still needs to be answered, since even the fact that a vote of three does not seem to carry any credence if the mayor does not want to abide by the vote, it becomes ceremonial. The city council and the mayor are elected to represent the people of this city, not their own personal interest. It's time for a charter review committee to be established, and the charter to be sent to the general public for a vote. A strong form of mayor does not mean a dictator, it means a strong leader, a strong representative of the people, and a good manager. On tonight's agenda, there's an item for the naming rights to the Apopka AmpliTheater with the Leach Law Firm PA. Was this made public so that any organization or business in our city could bid on it? Or is this another example of a strong mayor cutting deals with his Winter Park friends to disenfranchise the citizens of this city? I'm pretty sure that everybody knows where the Apopka AmpliTheater is and what's done there. Why do we need an outside group to be allowed to control its name? As a citizen and a taxpayer, I'm against it being done in this manner. I encourage the council to vote no on it, tonight and in the future.
Rob Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, here in Apopka. I want to thank all of you, Mayor Commissioners, for what you do for the community. I know that's tireless work, and you take some abuse along the way. I also want to thank to our friend Edward Bass for all his contributions, awesome man. I sent you back in May, recommendations with regard to the budgeting process. I have a few things I just want to review this evening. One, first of all, we need to look at our square miles. We are the largest city in square miles in Orange County. When we look at the aspect of especially our first responders, it should not only be measured against how we compared other communities, what's our response times? We need to look at that. The CIA process, or today identified one of the problems we have with infrastructure. We have too many people wearing too many hats. We need to look at that. We should be asking, if not already done, each department head should be asking each employee what they can do or what they need to do their job better. Further, each department should be looking at and talking to every department that they serve as to what they can do better. First responders are the number one in suicide. I strongly recommend you build in the budget, you bring in Travis Howes, who addressed about 60 firefighters and police officers last September. I was privileged to be able to attend. It's rare you find someone with his background, serving as a marine, a police officer, and a firefighter, to bring the reality of what you're talking about with suicide. Northwest Recreational Complex. We need to improve the field conditions. One of the biggest problems we have is we're not resting our fields. We need to develop the fields to the west of the football stadium, period. Further, every day, there are kids running out into the streets to pick up balls, errant balls at the back of the nets. Abbey Road and Jason Dwyer, we need to address that with safety nets. It won't cover every ball, but it'll cover 80 or 90% of them. On growth and development. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. Again, our city lacks the infrastructure. We don't have adequate staff or resources to manage our growth. When you compare Winter Garden, Sanford, Waltermont Springs, Mount Dora, and they're not perfect communities, you compare and look at the streets, you look at the sidewalks, you looked at the plantings, we are light-years behind them. We need to address that. And of course, Rob Olson can't let it slide without addressing schools. Well, if you've not ridden by, driven, driven, drive, and I'll get it out, by Apopka High School, guess what we have going in there? Portables. Again, Orange County public schools, as long as they have a room to put portals on, portables will continue to approve new development. These portables cost more to operate, heat, cool, maintain, and they don't provide the safety and security that brick and mortar does. We look to you to manage this process. You have the power to pause new development. Other communities have done it. We ought to look at stopping the new housing developments at this point. Take a pause until we can get our legs underneath us. We're looking for you to do that. Finally, I would say, I had to leave the last meeting, and if you cannot sit in a chair on a balcony, it's not a balcony.
Thank you.
Albert McKimmy?
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Mayor. Today, another member of our group, Apopka Citizens for Honest Government, was diagnosed with cancer. It appears that the toxicity in this city is never-ending, from the administration to our water and our basic infrastructure. The health and safety of city residents and employees of this city is not a privilege granted to us by those who govern us. We are not indebted to them, they are accountable to us for our tax dollars collected locally from state and federal funding. Your mothers, fathers, and grandparents fought wars and contributed to the economy, so your children and grandchildren could have unalienable rights. Commissioners, you were elected to provide checks and balances to ensure monies are used to our best advantage, so that our community grows in a responsible manner. There is nothing responsible by infrastructure lagging behind development. That primarily occurs because the city has not been a good custodian of monies entrusted to it. Apopka is continuously trying to play catch-up. Orange County has 18 road projects that are working on. Apopka does not have a single project included. If I had time, I could explain to you how and why this is happening, but I'm restricted to four minutes. So, are our Commissioners, our city administrators fighting sufficiently on our behalf? Once our bank- One flower bank cost us $1 million in lost interest. Wendover has already cost us over 300K to date, with a potential for a multimillion-dollar lawsuit. How did this happen? I believe it was based on advice from the then, in quotes, city attorney, Michael Rodriguez. Today, my question is, when was Michael Rodriguez last engaged to provide legal opinion? Since technically he resigned, the mayor or the city manager could engage him on a contracted non-employee role. But since his legal opinion on Wendover has already proved so costly, would the city be so naive to, again, do so? To do so would create great many allegations. For example, would he be being paid to keep silent, or is he being paid for legal opinion that has on numerous occasions been questionable? Can it be confirmed today or denied that Michael Rodriguez signed off on an email circulating in City Hall today? The fact that public records request on Michael Rodriguez are still outstanding. We have been unable to write complaints to Florida Bar and to prevent Michael Rodriguez from entering this building again because of his lack of legal knowledge. Did the city ever follow up on resolving the conflict in the charter about who could fire an attorney? Most of the problems in this city is experiencing currently could be resolved if we had a charter rewrite. I've been calling for that and a forensic audit for the last six months. All the commissioners now accept it's time to remedy the shortcomings in the charter to prevent these anomalies continually being brought to our attention month after month. Thank you.
Sylvester Hawke.
Good evening again, mayor commissioners. I want to turn our attention back to the last city council meeting we had, where the father of Austin Duran got up, and it was tough for me to stomach as a man. It was tough for me to stomach because in my 21 years in military, I have never had to go to one of my troops' home and tell them they lost a loved one. Now, I sit back and I just think, why haven't anything been done? Like the previous speakers, people came before me. We elected you to lead, and I said, before you lead, you follow, you get out of the way. It's time for you guys to show leadership, ladies, to show leadership and set your character at this council. Commissioner Diane, Commissioner Villasquers, we don't need any more suggestions. You guys need to set guidelines. Here's what I want done, here's the date I want it done by, and you get back with me. Now, when I say, back to Mr. Duran, when I say it was hard for me to stomach, as a grown man, I was almost in tears listening to that father's outcry. And here, his son is a first responder. Everything that our city commissioner, Mr. Ed Bass, received, he deserved that, and God bless his family. So I look at it in contrast to Mr. Duran sitting here looking at everything. I remember him saying his son was in the hospital for two weeks, two weeks, and not one time did the fire chief come to visit him. Think about that. You're in a hospital for two weeks, and you're a leader. Not one time come to visit you. I don't know if the mayor came to visit him. Two weeks in the hospital, think about that. If that was your son, think about that. And then I look at the flag. The flag was flown half-staff. Again, our city commissioner, Ed Bass, deserved that. But was it flown half-staff? And when was it flown half-staff for Mr. Duran's son? People sitting back in there looking, and they're looking for leadership. Our city, our state, and our country, we need leadership. Leadership for the people. When I think about his outcry, and I'm sitting there, and I have asked you guys before, what if it was your son? We voted three to two to remove the city attorney. We got rid of him. We voted three to two to remove the fire chief. The fire chief is still here. And I try to wonder to myself, what is the difference? Was it personal with the city attorney? Or is it not personal with Mr. Duran, his son? So I challenge you today to lead. You're up here to lead. Unless each and every one of you lead, we have what we have now in this city, total dictatorship by the mayor. And that cannot go on any longer. It has to stop. So I ask you to lead. Leadership matters. Accountability matters. Responsibility matters. People matters. Thank you.
Leroy Bell.
Leroy Bell, 2308 Blue Meadows Court, Rod Helen. I want to start with one of the slides that Mr. Hitt put up about Station Street. It looked like it was going to be a one-way street, and the reason they're putting it there is because of the businesses saying that when the people leave there, their business, they have to back out in the street. Correct? Yeah, that's what you just said.
They're already in the street.
They're already in the street. Thank you. That brings me back to Sixth Street, about this supposed to be now three houses other than seven houses. Well, what about the residents up there on Sixth Street? We got cars parked in the streets up there. Are we worried about the residents? Let me make one thing personally clear. I have nothing against ministers. My father was a minister. I got great respect for ministers in South Apopka. One had passed away, G.H. Washington. And you got one sitting right next to you. I got great respect for Reverend Smith, his pastor, Reverend Herman Derico. Mad respect. But what I don't have respect for is the hypocrites that come up in here and use the city as a bank account. I see that you're taking it off of the agenda, and it had been said that the law firm of renaming the rights of the amphitheater happened to be friends of the mayor, who I love. It don't make any sense. Help it make sense to me. Why in the world are we letting these people come in and just gather money up from this mayor, when that money could be spreaded out in the city? We just got the report from the CRA. Every time it come up CRA, we got a few people to show up. When it's time to give out money, we got a few people to show up. When it come up to the hard part of helping the residents, it don't happen. Why is that? Is this, are we going to fund the mayor reelection campaign? We going to let him take city tax dollars and give to his friends so they can get out and advocate for his reelection? And yes, I want to disagree with my friend back there. He said if it's not, if you can't sit on it, it's not a balcony. That shouldn't be a problem. We lost the lawsuit, we lost money. Put the portfolio of houses down there so these people can live, because you, mayor, want to put three over there so I love and his hypocritical friends get money.
I just want to say something real quick. I'm not sure what the nature of us taking the piece of business on the naming rights was for this evening's agenda. What I do want to do is, I know Mr. Leach personally, and high-character guy, I know him personally. So I just don't want, I know we're talking about pieces of business here, and names get interchanged in the spirit of commentary. I just want to make sure that Mr. Leach, I know personally, he used to live here in Apopka. I just don't want there to be any kind of negativity, you know, around that. So, anyway, just wanted to clarify.
Ace Woodham.
Ace Woodham, 47 East Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida. Proud sixth generation here in Apopka myself. Very disappointed in the council. As some advice, we've got to address it as the council. The mayor of this council, I've had talked to 50 city employees from all departments, from the streets, parks, sewage, sanitation, whatever, and parks. Back in, when he was running for office the first time, the mayor said, was talking about the pensions, the city employees and the pensions, how valuable, how valuable the city employees was to his community. He did a survey with 300 people. This is his words. A survey of 300 people, and the majority of them came back that the best of those guys was the employees were the best that they could get. How many people was the city of Apopka looking for? How many positions before he came into office? Very few. I've got a request back from Susan on employment status at that time. But since he's taken office, he has lost more employees than Maryland did in 60 years. 60 years, he's run good people off. He said, oh, they retired. He's lying. He forced them out. He's the one that told me that. He made them retire so he could cut the budget and make it look like he's done a good job. You made all these promises, mayor. It's all out there in your writing to the city employees. They're scared of you. This means cancer. He is destroying this city, and I'm going to ask y'all this right now. For our budget to be approved, it's got to be approved by y'all. So I'm asking you, when his salary comes up, don't approve it. Okay? Don't approve his salary. Let him work at half-price, like you said. He told me himself, oh, I'm working for half-price. I'm going to go within half-price and save the city money and do all this. There's no need to make that kind of money. Kyle Becker, I'm sorry, Commissioner Becker, we went by a survey that was done under Joe Kielheimer's regime, and suggested we brought all our pay up to scale. And so Kyle recommended we bring the mayor's pay back up to scale. That didn't mean he had to accept it. But you know what it did when he did accept it? He took his retirement, his pension, that he loved to talk about to all his city employees, how great the pension is. He should have donated that half back to the city, but he didn't do it. But it made his pension look good. Look how much he's going to take home when he gets done tearing our city apart. The man is going to walk away. He already sold his insurance business or whatever he did with it. He's making money off the state again off of it. Unfortunately, our state representative left. I was wanting him to see if he could get some help from Tallahassee, come down here and investigate some of this asinine politics that's going on. But I will get a hold of his office. Our mayor has got to be gone. He is not good for us.
Thank you, Mr. Woodham.
Please help us.
Appreciate it.
You do appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate technology. Good evening, city council. Evening, everyone in the rightful places. Just want to take, first of all, I'm going to get back my seconds, but I just want to say thank you, guys, whoever did that arrangement. It's looking beautiful, and it shows that our city can do great things. So I love the floral arrangements. Now, you prove people's character by their actions, not just by the word. So I want to say to everyone in the city of Apopka, I admire our city. Last Saturday, it made me very proud to be part of the city, as I watched our city come together during the thunderstorm to help us at our event that we now had to reschedule. As you can clearly see, I lost my voice through the process in the rain, but it was great to see all of our, the fire department, to see vendors, seeing everyone come together as we still tried to put the event together, setting up, and then having to quickly break it all down when the lightning started striking. I'm asking the city to please forgive us that we were not able to deliver what we promised on that day because of the weather, but we don't know what God blocked us, blocked that day. We could have faced a lot worse. So I'm asking everyone to please be patient with us. We are working on rescheduling a new date. Thank you to the fire department, everyone who was out there to help us make that call to reschedule. Thank you to the city of Apopka, who is working with us, Rodney and staff, on getting a new date. DJ Cowie, Kashida Farms, Mike Durin. If you guys don't know who he is, just know he's an awesome person. We had a time scheduled for setup, and he called me 15 minutes before the scheduled time in the rain to ask me, where are you? I'm already here. So the city of Apopka is blessed to have some amazing people working together. We are requesting of everyone to please follow us on Facebook, because there will be a new date. We do have four dates right now in mind, but we are also looking at weather forecast to try to do our best to avoid a repeat of another rescheduling or cancellation. Also, I'm asking, this vendor did not ask me to do this, but I'm asking if anyone has a 10 by 10 tent that you could possibly donate to one of our vendors. That vendor during the rain ran back out and made sure to get raincoats for everyone who was out there that we can stay in the rain. But during the process, with the high winds, their tent got badly damaged. So if anyone could just, please help us out by just providing that for the vendor. They did not ask for it, but that would be appreciated. And my final request is that, yeah, I have to be selfish. Go ahead, cancel all your plans, and just sit tight, wait for the date so you can show up, and you will have an amazing time at our event. We still have all the prizes. We have a lot to give away. We have a lot of fun planned for you, and just remember, it's all free. The parking is free, admission is free. Just be ready for a great time. Thank you.
And similar later, I have your tent.
I have the tent.
I have the tent.
Oh, thank you, I'll let you know who to get it.
Good evening. Norrette Ryan, former general employee, forced out of the Public Services Department. Last council, I presented proof of additional unbecoming conduct of the current Public Services Director, the successful fleecing of public funds. Why did this happen? Because foolishness knows no bounds if we allow it. Perhaps you had a chance to visit eighteen eighteen Kelly Park Road, to see with your own eyes the colossal failure of judgment and management by this Public Services Director, by allowing a retaining wall to be constructed adjacent to a roadway. Perhaps you read the last slide of my presentation last council, which is this one, that showed this Director's signature on a document at his hiring that states as a condition of employment, he agrees to abide by the policy manual. Yet another failure, as my termination without cause proves. But here is more proof of violating policy. The Director's employment paperwork states at-will employment, with or without cause termination. But my paperwork only acknowledges Florida as a right-to-work state. This is a clear difference that should have been recognized and upheld by Human Resources and the city attorney. Yet another folly by the former city attorney, who we all know resigned to avoid professional disgrace, but only because certain members of this council refused to be fooled. I implore you, do not miss this opportunity to sever your ties with another fool and cast your vote of no confidence for the Public Services Director. And if you are so inclined, for all those who are complicit in these violations. A public servant, a government professional, accepts their employment as a thankless job. We check entitlement at the door. But when you come across those who serve only themselves, it is your duty to show them the door. The continued employment of the Public Services Director is proof of zero government oversight. To say nothing validates him, to do nothing stains one's reputation. To be complicit is egregious. If not for my recurring four minutes, you would likely disregard rumors. But I am persistent to save you from making that mistake. This man is not a role model. My wrongful termination is a serious matter. Amassing a team of yes persons in the Public Services Department to falsify accomplishments for his financial gain is a serious matter. Threatening bodily harm to staff is a serious matter. But constantly obstructing qualified judgment, as this Director does, could result in the suffering of employees or the public. We would all like to believe that no one is above the law, but from where I stand, I go a step further, and I say no one is above policy. And yes, Mike Durin is an awesome person, and he deserves justice and respect most of all.
That it? Okay. All right, consent agenda, we have eleven items on consent, does anybody need to pull any of those items?
Yeah, number one for me, it's the eighteen East Station Street Code Enforcement lien release. I never got any answers of what that's about or what that's from. Code enforcement didn't know what that was either, so I don't know how that got on here. It was, somebody had said, I guess, that, and this leads me to something very important, is that, I guess, former city attorney Rodriguez put this on here?
I don't know. I don't know how it got on there.
Do you know what it is?
No.
Well, that leads me to, speaking about the city attorney directly, is that, let's go through, I guess, a timeline here. April fifth, we had a vote, three to two, to fire him. April nineteenth, a vote of four to one to seek additional help to look at our charter. He resigned May third, very abruptly and aggressively here, and then tendered his letter the next day. And then, last meeting, I specifically asked, is he no longer employed here? And you said, as of one-thirty that day, he was no longer employed by the city of Apopka. So, is he employed by us, or is he not?
He is.
How is that possible?
Well, you've got a document there in front of you that, he will, his resignation is effective July the third.
Where's that at? This, legal interpretation?
No, no, that's the legal interpretation, but.
We have no other document in front of us, then. It's in the minutes that we just passed, that you said his employment ended as of that day.
He hadn't signed the agreement, so.
It doesn't matter, he voluntarily, well, first of all, it's the opinion of this council that we have the authority to terminate either the city clerk or the city attorney's opinion. We did that, to Commissioner Nesta's point, on April fifth. Regardless, we can talk theory here, but on May third, he tendered his resignation without any date specific. So, when you tender your resignation, it's effective immediately, unless there's any other caveat to that statement. Fast forward to the testimony that you gave during the last meeting, to say that he was done, in fact, if we go back, I think it's one PM versus one-thirty, but in effect, he's done. How is he still employed?
Because I'm going by the.
By what?
By the document from Mr.
No, 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 no. We have attorneys that come into this council chambers every single time, that look at the same set of facts and render two different opinions. The meeting that was brought up, that he tendered his resignation, is we, as a collective body, said, we would put it up to the Attorney General to render a decision.
And she won't, she won't take it up?
Again, that's Michael Rodriguez's opinion.
No, I'll reach out to their office.
Give me the formal statement that they provide.
I don't have a formal statement.
Exactly. So, let's put up what they outlined specifically within the Attorney General's website, in terms of doing a interpretation of our charter, because they don't typically do it one-off. If it's one commissioner that says, hey, interpret it. This is a collective body that took a three-two majority vote opinion to make that determination. Actually, it was a four-one opinion to put it up to the Attorney General, but we did not do that because Mr. Rodriguez voluntarily resigned. He resigned effective May third. So if you want him back as an employee, he has to come through the ratification process again. So you can, you can pay whoever you want to, to support your point of view, but we should have an opportunity, again, we can go out and find an attorney that's going to potentially side with our point of view. That attorney that I brought up the last, the meeting on May third, was willing to do that.
And you had stated that he didn't sign, he didn't sign what?
The separation agreement.
Why would he have to have a separation agreement?
He quit, I don't, do we continue to pay him?
Yes, he's working for us, he spent two hours waiting today on the phone.
He hasn't, I've sent emails that he CC'd on, that I've asked very specific things about, and he's never responded, so is he working for you or working for us?
Working for all of us.
Yeah.
Why has he been absent the past three meetings, or the past two meetings?
Because he doesn't want to deal with the council.
So he gets to pick and choose what job he gets to.
No, he's working, he's working, he's working for community development, he's working for, I mean, he's working.
He works at the pleasure of the council. Talk about working outside of the city charter, which he loved to spout. This is just crazy to me. What, I guess, where are we at with him, then? Is he, did he quit, or is he still just our attorney now?
He's still working behind the scenes for us, yes.
In perpetuity?
No, July third.
What happened on July third?
That's the next, I've got the agreement in my office, I'll be happy to go get it at the break, so I'll do that.
What's July third? No, I don't understand.
Whatever day, I don't know.
But what's going to be contemplated?
What triggers on July third?
He will no longer be an employee of the city.
We said that the last meeting. You said that, it's in the minutes, we just approved the minutes, you approved the minutes. It's written in the, I can read them back if we want to, but it's basically Commissioner Nesta asked you specifically, point-blank, is Mr. Rodriguez still employed with the city? You said, as of today, he is not.
He hadn't signed the agreement, so.
There is no agreement to sign. We terminate him based off our interpretation of the city charter. He then voluntarily resigned the position on May third. There's nothing to sign. If I were to leave a place of employment, I give my notice, and I leave.
So what's in this agreement, then, that ends on July third? What, is there, he's still, because he's clearly not working for us. Again, talk about outside of the city charter, he's not working for the council. He's been on emails that I've specifically requested items, that neither the interim city manager or the attorney have never responded to. So, asking for very specific things that this council agreed to, so, I don't know, again, I don't know if he's working specifically for you at this point, or he hasn't been doing his job, let me just say that. So, is there, in the separation agreement, it's now signed?
Yes.
Is there a payment?
Yes.
What is that payment?
Ten weeks.
So, what's that, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand?
Probably.
And how long has he been an employee of the city?
Three years, I guess.
Wow. I just, I, so what you're saying is because he didn't sign something, he can control how long he's employed here?
No.
Okay.
Can we, can we get clarity on that? What, is that ten weeks time that he's accrued and owed to him? Or this is some sort of agreement?
Well, it's like we've done with other employees that left.
I would understand, we don't have a contract with him that outlines anything. So, absent the normal employee policy of what we would do for any general employee.
We've done twenty weeks for some.
The point being is if, if Mr. Patton or Dr. Patton had the policy around any employee that works for the city of Apopka, at the time of their termination or their voluntary resignation from their position, I'm assuming there's a policy that says you are owed, paid time off up to a certain amount, here you go, nice, thank you for your service to our city, and go on your way. I doubt anybody gets, hey, we feel you did a good job, and, oh, by the way, here's ten weeks. That's very fly-by.
Well, so, I was able to get some documents, he's gotten paid very similarly every single week since, except for last week, where he cashed in his PTO in the amount of around seven thousand dollars. From there, he's getting paid until June, July seventh is his termination date, and it's thirteen weeks of his base salary, which is somewhere between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars that he's getting paid to leave. On top of the PTO, on top of all these payments, again, that he's not working for the council, I know none of these people have, I don't know, you guys feel free, have you guys talked to him, have you met with him in any of your agenda reviews? I've had a lot of legal questions and haven't had a single word about, haven't had any responses. So again, I don't know who he's working for right now, and I don't know how he's getting paid right now, since he doesn't work for any of us.
I only learned of his employment yesterday.
Well, we had the discussion with Joe and with Chuck, that's the agreement we came up with.
Oh, again, I don't understand these additional payments that were made between May, when he quit, he resigned, and to current. So, we need to take a deeper dive into that, then, and see the legal ramifications of that.
All right.
Okay. So, can we, I mean, at this point, can we make a motion of some sort that we can stop his payment, as he's, I don't understand how he's getting paid, I don't understand the legal, he's resigned, he tender's resignation both in paper and yelling in here. How do we stop the payments? There's so much money going out to somebody that doesn't work for us.
I'm saying you don't have the authority to do it, based on this.
Based on this.
He, we don't, he voluntarily resigned on May third. So even if you dispute the action that we took on April fifth, he voluntarily resigned on May third. So, that's an immaterial argument to this conversation. So when he resigned on May third, hey, cut him a check for his accrued PTO, thank you for your service, on to, let's fill the next attorney, and move forward. But clearly, we can't do that. And we've got to play games here.
We're not playing games.
Well, we're playing games, because this is on the dais, we know why this is. Hey, you've hired an attorney to get a legal interpretation about whether or not we, as a council, have the authority to terminate the city clerk or city attorney position.
Correct.
Great. Now, we, as a majority, that had, made that decision before, you want me to go and contact?
Sure.
And I guarantee we're going to have disputing documents here.
Correct. It's, and again, I have his resignation letter right here, I have his paste stubs right here, I mean, it's just, this is just pure insanity, and it's these kind of games that make these meetings so much longer. I know everyone complains that they're so long, but it's these games right here that the voters don't want, and they've actively said that on all sides of any issue, they don't want long meetings, and it's because we have to take deeper dives into almost every single thing that we do, because there's games being played. The voters elected us to do ethical things, and we are supposed to vote in that correct way. Again, and I just can't get over, this is acting outside of the city charter, so, I don't know where we go from here, I think that is great, we get another attorney involved, I mean, this is, this is really bad, actually, I just think ethically, the ethics behind this are really shady, so.
And I just, quite honestly, I don't know if next meeting's going to come around, July third, and it's another.
No, it's done.
You said that the last meeting. It's in, it's in the record, our meeting minutes say that. The meeting minutes say that Michael Rodriguez resigned on May third. What are we up here doing? Like, what's the point of approving minutes and having it being formal part of the record, and then we just don't, we just say, okay, well, we'll just disregard this?
Commissioner Nesta, would you give me a copy of all of that that you have there?
Our city clerk should have all that, can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, so do we want to, we're taking item number one out?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, anything else from the consent agenda?
And just for the record, because it was, it was mentioned during the public comment session, the naming rights was removed from the consent agenda, I don't know.
It wasn't on the consent agenda, it was a business item.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, business item, it was, was it removed?
Yes.
Yes.
And I want it in the record, that the person who oversees our agenda doesn't know what one of the items is on our agenda.
Who oversees the agenda?
Okay, we got eleven, agenda, well, agenda items that we, so, items number two through eleven, motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries now.
And we're going to be, during council report, we're going to come back to this, so that we can get some resolution here.
All right, business item, North Star Logistics Center, Gene.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the North Star Logistics Center two major development plan. The property is located on this northwest corner of John's Road and State Road four-fifty-one, approximately twenty-six-point-four acres in size. Area shows industrial complex on the east, residential uses on the northwest and Area shows industrial complex on the east, residential uses on the north, west, and south. For reference, at a previous city council meeting of April 5th, 2023, the applicant proposed the shown major development plan with a western access almost abutting the property line and loading docks located centrally in the project area, exposing it to the western adjacent property owners. The revised major development plan proposes an industrial warehouse center that includes two buildings totaling 246,879 square feet in area and are proposed to be single story with a proposed height of 43 feet. While 91 parking spaces are required for both buildings, 275 parking spaces are proposed. Based on the town hall meeting on May 2nd, 2023 with adjacent property owners, the applicant removed the previously proposed driveway on the west side of the project area and reconfigured the buildings to reduce or eliminate traffic operations impact on adjacent, on the adjacent residential community. The applicant revised the westerly access by setting it back 400 feet from the property line. Two entrances are proposed with right turn lanes to preserve the, to, I'm sorry, right turn lanes to serve the project from Johns Road and the south side. In addition to the building setback of 96 feet, there's an existing opaque fence as well as canopy trees with 14 additional canopy trees over what is required for the buffer adjacent to Lakeside Residential subdivision. The applicant is also proposing 11 additional canopy trees over the required for the buffer on the north and 16 additional canopy understory trees over the required buffer in the south. The applicant meets the open space requirement with the proposal of a mulch trail along the top pond of, the top of Pond 1, the easternmost portion of the project area, which convert, connects to the pedestrian walkway at the front of the site. Site is designed in accordance with the requirements and intent of the Land Development Code. The architectural elevations meet the city's development design guidelines for residential uses as well. On May 2nd, 2023, a town hall meeting was held. Adjacent property owners discussed and posed their questions to the applicant and their representatives regarding traffic, buffer, and building setback concerns. Transportation concerns specifically regarding the Bradshaw Road and Johns Road intersection were discussed by both Pam Richmond and the applicant's transportation engineer. Because the said section is owned and maintained by Orange County, Pam stated that she will discuss the concerns with the county to find solutions to the traffic challenges experienced by residents. Adjacent residents also asked the applicant if the provided buffers would mitigate sounds from trucks and business operations, and yes, the configuration would help to do that. As I resolved the meeting, the applicant revised their MDP to address these concerns. The DRC recommends approval. At its meeting on February 14th, 2023, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the MDP. At its meeting on April 5th, 2023, City Council unanimously voted to, voted to table the North Star Logistics, the Logistics MDP to date start of May 17th, pending the requested town hall meeting. The recommended motion is to approve the North Star Logistics Center 2 major development plans. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
No, I just want to disclose, when they had their community meeting on May 2nd, I did attend that, that was done here in the city chamber. And then I met, uh, at the request of the client, uh, here, also at City Hall on June 13th. And it was just to really go over what was, uh, discussed and agreed upon and the changes that they made on May 2nd. And that's it. Just wanted to disclose that.
Uh, similar, uh, same thing, different location of the meeting, different date, but same thing. I was here present for the community meeting and we had a chance to meet, um, after the changes were made.
I did as well.
Same for me.
Okay. All right. Um, Alex, could you come on up?
Let me be very brief. Thank you. To the right. Good evening, Jason Searle Gray Robinson, 301 East Pine Street, Orlando. Uh, here this evening with Todd Watson from Cadence Partners. He's the property owner and developer. We also have our, uh, engineering and traffic consultants on the team here with us. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to be back before you again. Mayor and commissioners, thank you. Uh, I want to applaud and appreciate both Jean's and Pam's work. This has been quite a process and I think it's resulted in something that is, uh, a greatly improved, a final result for everybody. Uh, the, the property itself, this is a current visual of what we're looking at. It's, uh, it's currently zoned and future land use of industrial, and I think that's a key point. So we're starting with industrial and we're finishing with industrial. A lot of times when we come before you, we're asking for future land use and/or zoning changes to reentitle or change the development makeup of the property. In this instance, it always has been industrial future land use and industrial zoning. And I want to spend just a couple of minutes, I have this complete, uh, PowerPoint, but given the hour and the full agenda, I thought I'd just take a couple of minutes and highlight a couple of things Jean touched on, um, and do so in a way to kind of tie it all in a, in a bow here, hopefully. So, uh, this is an example of a similar project not far from here on a Koi Apopka Road recently constructed, an example of the Cadence Partners, um, high-end final product that'll be similar to the design that we'll see here. And I think as part of the, um, community meeting process, these visuals and some of the detailed discussions, I think we talked for over an hour that night about it, were really helpful to some of the neighbors in the, uh, the pre-existing, um, residential located along the western side, um, on the Johns Roads side of the property. And I'd like to, if I can, again, repeating a couple of points from, uh, Jean's presentation. If we lay these out side by side, there were a couple of things that were done, and I think this was a direct result of the feedback that we received through the community meeting process. It was first tabled on March 1st, uh, and thereafter on March 28th, we had our first community meeting, really just to intake, uh, you can see the residential there along the west, uh, Johns Road located the south, 451 to the east. And, uh, as part of that began working and starting to change our site plan and, uh, orientated in such a way, it goes from kind of a capital L on its, uh, long side in the previous or initial, and we flipped it so that it's now, it stands like a, a, a capital L should be with the access drive through 400 feet within the property, creating, uh, an even further buffer to the existing residential. All of the, um, services through the commercial distribution operations will be done so through the middle of the property as opposed to previously on that outside of the property. Additionally, as part of the feedback that we received, we increased the landscape plan. Um, Jean touched on this, but just to highlight it again, 30 additional canopy and understory trees were added over and above what is required by code. At the end of, at the end of this process, I think the MDP results in something that is going to be a quality addition, both aesthetically and functionality for this property, for the city, and for the residential neighbors next door. Uh, I'd be happy to, as well as anybody else on our team, to answer any questions you may have. If there is any public comment, I would ask for a chance to rebut at the end. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions for Jason? Not anybody from the public which is speaking on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I just had one question, I guess, for, um, I know, because we had, you know, obviously angst between the neighborhoods on either side and this, this piece of business was, uh, the, the property, uh, around it was sold, uh, back in 2017 where the neighbors live. And it seemed like that the council should have at least had something in the agreement that when they bought their residential lots, that they should have been notified that there was industrial property in, in the, in the midst of that. It doesn't look like from the, the minutes I've got here that, that the two commissioners that were on in 2017, um, made that as a part of their, um, agreement, which is, you know, so I, I mean, maybe, maybe there's a reason why you didn't notify the, the residents that there was industrial next to them.
But is that the responsibility of the council or the responsibility of the staff that approves the developments?
You could have put that in the agreement.
Well, I, I mean, what, so I, how immaterial to the conversation right now. Um, is anybody up from public?
No, none of them.
Complain about, so rewind back to when this first came up and can, Mr. Searle, can you put that one side by side comparison up there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So when we saw the first concept plan on the left-hand side there, you know, obviously I, I voiced a tremendous amount of concern because you had a, a driveway that was going to have potentially 12-foot high, 13-foot high semis going right behind those homes. The applicant heard that, they came and they heard from our, the community meeting, that was well-attended. Um, did you attend that meeting?
No.
Yeah, okay. But a few of us here were, the two commissioners that you're talking about were in attendance. You were there, right?
Yes.
I was there too. Um, we had a full house here of all the residents that live in that particular community. The applicant got up and talked about the revisions to their plan, which on the right-hand side eliminates the semi-drive-through. You would have surface vehicles just parking in normal, what you would equate to office parking. Um, they re, redid the ingress egress locations that make it more practical. I still have some concerns about off-site to this project in terms of some of the semi-traffic, but, you know, it's interesting when Mr. Howell got up earlier to talk about Senate Bill 102. This is an industrial zoned property. Think about the alternative if, you know, the applicant chose not to make some of the concessions and make some of the design changes that we've asked for, so it's a little bit less of a, a strain on the people that are abutting this particular property. But what's the, what's the opposite? The opposite is if we deny this request.
Oh, I'm not, nobody's saying deny.
Well, we were on smooth sailing until you just.
No, I just.
You had to bring that up. I just want to make for the record of why I'm making the decision I'm making. Um, but think about the alternative here, and I, and I'm speaking more to the residents of this particular community, is this is a 29-acre site, give or take, right? If Senate Bill 102 says that they have the right to 25 dwelling units per acre, quick math, that's 662 units at 80%. If we have 20% green space, I'm not sure what the requirement is on mixed family or this particular area. But that's 529 dwelling units. That could potentially be up to 75 feet tall, I think, is what you were saying in, in your review of that presentation. Um, I'm sure the traffic count would be much, much higher. Uh, the disruption to the people within this particular community would be much, much higher. Um, I still think that it's incumbent upon staff that the intersection at Johns and Bradshaw is going to have to be very top of mind, um, because again, it just takes one semi there that is having to wait for faster traffic to, you know, have to wait to make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn that disrupts maybe some of the residents that are coming out of, of that neighborhood. Um, but I think, you know, when we, when I met with the applicant, it's, all of these things are coming up with women scenarios. I'm not sure what, um, notification to a resident that was seeking to purchase a particular property, if it was the city's responsibility to say this is industrially zoned, uh, property. I've never known that to be the case when I've gone to buy a house. So I'm not sure what that would have done. But absent that, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a.
Oh, it's a win, absolutely.
It's a good success story of how they've understood the concerns of abutting residents, have reworked their design, have reworked some of the infrastructure for this to come up with a better project.
Absolutely. Can't, can't disagree with that at all. Everything you said is absolutely correct. I mean, I don't, but I don't think in 2017 they contemplated the, when, uh, Senate Bill 102, but I'm just saying is it seemed like if we were going to sell industrial property, turn it into residential, that if the neighbors back in 2017 should have, somebody should have known that there was, you know, a.
So is that, is that standard? That, is that standard when we, we zone a property that you have to, I mean, at any point do you notify as, as they build a residential development and we have a commercial property behind it? I mean, whose responsibility is it now? Is it falling on us?
Normally it would be the seller. In other words, if the homeowner's over there.
At the time, it was, it was vacant land.
Yeah.
Who are we going to tell?
Yeah, but, but I'm just trying to figure out, because it's, when he mentions it, it almost sounds like, well, there were two commissioners there, they should have known. I don't know, was that part of the packet? Was that told to us at that time?
Staff report always says what's in the surrounding area and it would have been listed as industrial.
So the same way that we had it, so did the developer, so did the staff.
Also, the developer was originally trying to buy that property to put in, I think it was single-family homes or something like that. So they, we don't know, I don't know whether or not they were promoting that as this is going to be our second or third subdivision as part of that area or not, but, uh.
So, I mean, it's irrelevant. I mean, it's 2017 information back then. I just don't feel, is that our responsibility? So that means every development that.
No, 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 we sold, we sold the property. That's, that's the whole, that's the difference. We sold the property, so we did control the property. We changed the, the, the zoning from industrial to residential. I'm just saying we should have, we should have notified the, the, should have had the developer, the, the, the residential developer notify these, the, the folks that were on the, the perimeter for, at least for those folks, they should have known, hey, this is industrial right next to you. The city sold us the property, but this is just something that, you know, you need to be aware of.
So that falls on the developer, that doesn't fall on the council? So I'd like to take that back. It doesn't fall on us. It falls on the developer who took the parcel and developed it. Okay. For the record then, it was not the responsibility of the council to tell the new developer, the new residents that it was commercial behind a more industrial. That fell on the developer. Am I correct in saying that?
We could have made that, we could have made that a, a condition.
But we're armchair quarterbacking something that happened years ago that are irrelevant to this conversation.
Okay.
I know, I just feel like the developer today, because I followed on the, it was important to me, um, because when we first heard it and we realized the community was unaware of it, it was really important and you made the effort and we did have a big, uh, show from the community. And I feel that you, you satisfied them where it was important for them. You, you heard their concerns, you, you did what you had to do, and I think we were all in, in agreeance. And I know I sat there, said nothing. I know Commissioner Becker sat there, we said nothing, we just came to listen. Um, the feedback that we got from some of the residents, uh, a lot of them were positive. Some of them, and I remember saying this to you when we met, they absolutely, some said, we just don't want the product. And that, I actually said to them, that wasn't a choice. Um, you know, the choice was to try and make some concessions. I feel that you did that. Um, and when we sat again on June 13th, you reiterate that and I was satisfied with that. Whatever you promised that community, you reiterated, and so that's why it's on the, on the city, uh, it's on the council today. And right now, for public comment, we don't have any of the residents here. So they obviously are satisfied at this point. They realize that it's a development, they cannot shut it down.
Thank you for moving us forward.
All right, thank you. All right. Now, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the.
I think the proper, because we don't have counsel, it's clear, uh, we're supposed to be removing it from the table and then voting on it.
Removing it from what?
The table. We tabled it, I think, three times and if I'm not mistaken, and we don't have an attorney to, because there's not one that works for us, uh, to remove it from the table, then vote on it.
Oh, okay. So we have to make a motion to.
I'm hoping that we remove.
The table.
This item from the table.
And bring it up. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimous. Next up, motion to approve the major development plan for the North Star Logistics Center 2.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimous. Next up, development agreement for Wild Oaks. Jake and Pam?
Okay, um, I sat with you through this presentation. I just have to take a two-minute break.
Sure.
Actually, I think it makes more sense to have the pioneering agreement slash West Kelly Park Road funding agreement go first.
We have new agenda software and I think when they revised the agenda, um, they got switch.
Okay.
Because the, I think the second is contingent on the, on the first, so we want to do the pioneering agreement first.
Okay. So the pioneering agreement, okay.
Right. And in fact, the, so the second agreement, the Wild Oaks agreement. And in fact, the, so the second agreement, the Wild Oaks agreement, Mr. Hues is here from the Lounds Law Firm, their agreement to both agreements, they basically have to be approved together for them to be, to agree, and it'll make sense once, once we see it.
This is the only half of the...
Good evening, Commissioners. We've all met before. My name is Jacob Schumer. For anybody who doesn't know, I'm an attorney, I've done work for, I work for the city. I've done work for the city on land use agreements, basically, for six years now. Initially with the Shepherd Firm, and now on, with a different firm, but I've been working with the city, working with Gene and Bobby and Jim for, since 2017. And this came up because of some of the complaints I've heard today from the public and ways to address it, which is that the city's road infrastructure isn't in place when the development comes in. And so Pam and some developers were all having separate agreements regarding transportation coming into this Kelly Park Road interchange area that's on the screen right now. And they came up with an idea, basically, for a framework of having everybody into one agreement, one agreed plan, to build out this road grid and specifically to widen Kelly Park Road, all in the same system. And so I've been basically working with Pam a lot and been her, I've been her legal, her legal champion, basically, from the city's perspective, helping this transportation agreement come through. And we've been working on it for about six months. Here's the general idea of the agreement. Basically, the developers front the city a lot of money, not for free, but they front the city money for the widening of Kelly Park Road, 15 to 20 million dollars, so that the city can accelerate and bring in Kelly Park Road, get it widened, beginning in January of 2025. And as for other roads in this area, these grid roads, they have to, they have a three-year timetable, beginning with design and ending with the completion, to start on these roads the second that they get a development approval alongside these roads or using these roads, and they have to adhere to these roads. And also, they'll be donating the land and ponds necessary to get this road infrastructure in place. And in exchange, what they get is impact fee credits, both for the money that they're giving to the city for the widening of Kelly Park Road, but also for the money that they're spending on the central roads that are going to act as thoroughfares in this area that are going to end up being city roads. Some of the benefits of this agreement, so the city's benefits are, you get interest-free funding for this Kelly Park Road widening project, and you get it faster than you normally would, and you don't have to take out debt, like you wouldn't have to, you don't have to take out debt like you normally would. You get donation of property automatic, which may have come otherwise, but it's not sure how much right away you'd be able to get for free, and then guarantees timely construction of the rest of the road grid. For the developers, they get these impact fee credits, which they may have otherwise gotten for some of these roads, because some of them might have been necessary for their development anyway, but some of them might not be, some of them may be, the city is able to require them to build a bigger road than they otherwise would, would build, and they'll know that they get impact fee credits for that, and you would normally grant some impact fee credits for that. They get a predictable note road network to serve these developments that they're building, and that'll help them justify their investment into the community. And then they'll get certainty regarding what the city expects of them when it comes to this road network and what kind of roads they need to build out. So just to give an idea, currently you don't have an agreement. So each road, we were having three different agreements being discussed before this started, and we do have a separate agreement, as we talked about. And each road associated with each project would be individually conceptualized with each individual developer. They'd be, they'd have different timeframes under both permitting and in a development agreement, if you have one, or a transportation agreement. They, under the law, are only required to build the road that's necessary for the development, rather than what the city might want, so like a bigger road, if they, if the city, or a three-lane road, if the city believes that it's going to be a major thoroughfare. Of course, you can ask them to build more for credits. All this would be individually negotiated, and you'd have to wait out funding for Kelly Park Road, or take a loan in order to get that done. With the agreement, roads have to be designed according to city-approved engineers, they have to communicate with the city on those designs. The developer has to build to the city's requirements for these roads, even if it doesn't make sense with their individual developments. They get impact fees for the design and construction, and need to hear for the, adhere to this standardized timeline of three years, which obviously has the potential for extensions if, you know, as things tend to occur. And then Kelly Park Road, we know we can commence widening by January 20, January 1st is the expected time, but we can, the design is already being done by Palas and Bennett, who are present, and we might be able to do it earlier if we're able to get all the property in place. Important to say what this doesn't do is, it doesn't grant any development approvals. So they still have to come to you all, still have to come to staff for all the normal zoning, site plan, construction plan, anything that they need to come to you anyway on, they still need to come to you. This doesn't, it's not an approval under the city code. And also, there are other developers in this area, there's not a lot of them, but they are out there, and this doesn't bind them, though it sets out what Pam, at least, expects to have going forward in the city. And just to go back to what properties are covered by this agreement, the yellow shaded properties are covered by this agreement in some way. Some of the properties, let me see if I can do this. These properties up here are not, are basically slated to be added later, but they are under contract, they aren't owned yet by the developers. But they fully expect it to come into the agreement. So the benefits to the community, obviously, roads will be constructed alongside development on a faster timeline, so these roads will be there before, potentially before the development would absolutely necessitate them, so you'll have some, hopefully, excess capacity and newer roads. The traffic will come in, help those local businesses that have already invested, and of course, this is a long-term plan, so we're going to see this area slowly or quickly grow. Construct, this, all this road construction is going to be funded with impact fee money from new developments. So that's an important point. None of this money is going to come from the general fund. And if for some reason the impact fees don't cover the construction of the roads, the developers still need to pay for them under this agreement. So the city, there should not be any money coming from the general fund. And eventually, we expect an increase in general tax revenue from these developments. Of course, we don't know what that would be. The people that are developing this are, could fit in a conference room, at least the people from the, at this stage of development. But they seem to be very enthusiastic about this, this proposal. That's it for the presentation. Just to give you an idea of some numbers that I do have, because it's hard to project out, as of now, we, so just to give you an idea, we got a estimate of the amount of cost in today's dollars for all of these roads. That is, all of these, these red roads, Effie, and Kelly Park Road, not Golden Gem, not Sattler. An estimate for all of those is $45 million to construct. And we estimate that these, all of these properties, just the yellow properties, would generate 80 million in impact fee, in impact fees. So what we're talking about is if only these developments are built, and all of these roads are built, then, then all of these roads will have been built to the city's standards, and you'll have 35 million extra dollars to spend on city improvements. But of course, that's not, that's not actually likely to occur, because costs are going to change, you're, you might adopt a new impact fee schedule, and also, this doesn't include, like, for example, the hospital property on Effie. It doesn't include impact fees that'll be paid by other developers. And for other developers that aren't in this, they can, we can come to a similar agreement, but the agreement also contemplates adding new developers later, but whether or not to do that is, is going to be up to the city. Are there any questions at this point?
Any questions for Jake?
To, and thank you for meeting with me on Monday to go over this in more detail, it was very helpful. A couple of things we discussed, and I just want to make sure we reiterated, is that there's an opportunity to basically, out of the funds that are deposited, to hire a separate firm to kind of manage this.
Yes.
And I think that is something we absolutely need because of the complexity of this.
Yes, and so the thing is, this agreement is, it's complex in some ways, but also, there's nothing in this agreement that your city hasn't had before in other development agreements. And the fact that you have one agreement that's spanning all of these properties might make things simpler, but it's the sheer amount of work that, that I expect will be a lot of, it'll be a lot of work. And yes, the agreement says you can use the, these funds for administrative expenses. As part of this process, developers have to get all their costs approved before they can get credits for them, and Pam has indicated she's going to hire a, an ex, a construction expert and inspector to make sure not only that all the costs that they are, all the money they're spending is right and justified, but also that they're doing the work, the work right. And yes, you can, they can use the developer money, we can use the developer money to do it.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I met with you on Monday as well, and both you and Pam did a great job of explaining in detail what was taking place, and I'm excited to see the fact that we're getting ahead of the game in making these plans in advance and making sure our infrastructure is in place in order to support, to support the growth and the development in this area. And I just agree, like Commissioner Nesta said, that we have someone hired to oversee the project to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so we met on the 14th, good conversation. Pam got bored with me after about 30 minutes, so she left. But, no, good conversation. I think, and you touched on it a little bit in the slide maybe before, but like, for instance, Business Journal today or the other day was talking about how one of the pieces was bought from one of the people that are within this pioneering agreement. So just kind of talk through that scenario. The agreement's going to say, hey, we're, we're responsible for this network that we're talking, we're talking about right now, regardless if I, if I sell off a little parcel here, a little parcel there, what we're signing up for or potentially approving today, this is the outcome that we're going to get, regardless of all the kind of individual sales or sub-sales.
And that's one of the things that, as a person that represents local governments, I'm most sure to protect the city on is, they, we, they, I don't want the city to be dealing with a single-purpose entity company shell games, where somebody sells a property, oh, no, they aren't down by it, which is why this is going to be recorded, and, and anybody that owns any of these, any property touching one of these roads, any of these yellow properties, except for the ones, until these are added, if they are touching one of these red roads, then they're going to be responsible for building it if they, once they come in. And if they are the only property that, that is out there, then they have to build it all the way to Kelly Park Road. So it doesn't matter how much they, if they sell it off or anything like that. Was that your question? Yes, that was, that's the intent, and they can't, they can only release properties from this once all of the obligations associated with that parcel are completed.
Commissioner Palasquez?
Oh, thank you. I think I was the last one that you met with, which was Tuesday, and I thank you for all the time that you gave me to kind of understand this whole development here. And the only thing I think I was kind of concerned was a timeframe. And I said that to you, I said, you know, we start something and then it stagnates, and then it just goes by the wayside, but you said built into this is a timeframe. Once they start, then they have so much time before they start turning dirt. So, I mean, that was a concern for me from previous projects that we've had around the city, where we've turned dirt and it's, you know, it's been stagnated, so that was, for me, that was a concern.
Just to give an idea, under this agreement, if you had grant, once you grant that kind of development plan approval that you just granted before this, this item, they would have had, they would have had 12 months to design it. They'd have six months to acquire all the property necessary, which they shouldn't have to acquire property in the ordinary case, and then 18 months to construct it. So they would have three years, the second you approve that, they theoretically, you have a brand-new road in, within three years. Of course, you can grant reasonable extensions. And based on a comment from Commissioner Nesta earlier, anything longer than six months needs to come to you guys. So that's the way that you get that timeliness set up.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Come on down.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. It's going to take me a couple of seconds to gather my thoughts on this. Commissioner Becker said some time ago that I was cast on this development area a long time ago, and I agree with him. So I'm not here today to cast any aspersions on the pioneering agreement. I would simply like to put on record some of my concerns. You know, everything in life, I feel, should be fair and equitable. But again, I notice Golden Gem Road is in blue. Golden Gem's not spoken about today, although I believe it is included in the pioneering agreement. My recollection is, and I've said this numerous times, Golden Gem Road is going to be subject to rehabilitation. I don't know what that means, nobody's ever decided they would explain it to me. The rehabilitation will be adjacent to this areas where there's building on the yellow parts of Golden Gem Road. It's my recollection at the last meeting that Kelly Park VB Developments also added three properties that they are going to do some more work on, which will extend the area of Golden Gem Road down a little bit further, almost closer to Parkview Preserve. So that we're going to get a situation where there's going to be rehabilitation to the road, probably just a little over half to three-quarter ways down the road. Now, when that's going to happen, we don't know, because there's no dates for it, it's, could happen anytime. But again, I remember Commissioner Becker saying that this development on the corner of Kelly Park Road and Golden Gem Road was going to be a flagship development. So for me, a flagship development with retail stores is going to draw a lot of traffic. If it's going to draw a lot of traffic, I would presume that traffic will be traveling from Ponton along Golden Gem Road to go to the new Kelly Park VB Developments with the retail stores. I do not think that anyone would travel down to Plymouth Sorento Road, go along Plymouth Sorento Road, and then turn up. So you've really got to accept that Golden Gem Road is going to become a thoroughfare from all the new developments in Ponton, and anyone else coming off of 441 who doesn't want to go back down to Plymouth Sorento Road to travel along it. So that if we rehabilitate Golden Gem Road, only three-quarters of it, we're doing a disservice to the other people at the other end of the road. Now, bear in mind, the city does not own Golden Gem Road. It belongs to Orange County. Orange County, I believe, offered the city $800,000 for them to adopt the road. Over a period of time, Pam originally said that Golden Gem Road would cost 2.1 million to rehabilitate the whole length of the road. Now, the last impact fees, they were suggesting it was going to cost more like $4 million per mile. Golden Gem Road is, is two miles long, so we're looking at $8 million the city's going to have to spend to rehabilitate it. That, just now with the pioneering agreement, there's nothing stipulated in where that money's going to come from. It's not mentioned today. I don't think it's fair to residents to be discriminated against, because at this particular point, you're only prepared to rehabilitate part of the road. If you're going to adopt that road, I think it's only right and proper that the whole road's adopted from one end to the other, because when that new development opens up, the people at the south end of Golden Gem Road are going to be subject to all the traffic that goes along to the new flagship development. Thank you.
Maybe for clarity's sake, can you kind of just reel out a high level, just talk about the different coloration and what that means?
Yeah, yes. So, so it's, it's a little small in the legend. These red roads mean that these are developer, these are going to be built by developers based on when they start their construction on their project. These roads up here, at least some of them, are already in the process of getting built by the Galvin Group. These, these two roads down here, the southern extension of Effie and the east, the Sadler Road portion on Kelly Park VB Development are also, they aren't being built yet, but they are ready to go. Effie, the reason why Effie is a slightly different color is because it already exists as opposed to its original construction. So it's being approved. The plan is to improve it to, is to improve it to the code, the Kelly Park Road standard. And the city actually has the ability to amend this plan. Under the plan, basically, it's a, you know, it's a planning function, and the city has the ability to amend it with the comment of the developers. And developers can request amendments when it, when it makes sense, such as, let's say for some reason, there's a huge amount of problem getting property in some location and for a road, you can move it with the agreement of everybody. So one thing that this agreement does is bring everybody in this, onto the same page. And then green is Kelly Park Road, that being the purpose of the, the subject of prefunding. Blue basically means that the city wants to build, wants to improve it and is going to do it itself, and it's not part of this agreement. So it's not part of the agreement with the, with these developers. The Golden Gem Road has been something I've been working on kind of separately. We talked about potentially including it, but the problem is it's not the city road. And I, I, of course, I, I was part of a meeting where, with Orange County, where we discussed it, and Orange County was not at all, it was not clear how much money, if anything, Orange County would provide. They weren't very clear about that. Obviously, whether or not the city ends up taking it over, subject to funding from Orange County to improve it, obviously, I'm already, I'm helping Pam on that as, right now, it's one of the other projects that I'm helping Pam with. But the fact that it's not in this agreement is just because it's subject to discussion with the county.
So I thought when we approved Wild Oaks a few months ago, whenever that was, they had agreed that they would be improving that to some capacity, the fringe that they had.
They are donating right away along Golden Gem as part of that agreement.
And they'll be doing some interim improvements. I, I have a contract right now that I'm trying to get executed to start the design of Golden Gem Road from Capitol Reef Way North. The segment of Sadler on the west side of Golden Gem Road has been designed. We're running into problems with Orange County. I'm trying to take that segment. It's, there's dirt there and we're fighting over that essentially. And then the other piece of Sadler, the city's also taking on with the, it will be used with the surplus impact fee money. There are a lot of developments outside of our partnership of the pioneering agreement that are coming in. We just talked to one earlier this week, 350 residential units, you know, with the increased impact fee money. There's a development on the northwest corner of Kelly Park and Plymouth Sorento. I mean, there are a lot of developments. I, I feel confident that we can do all these roads. That's why I'm going to go ahead and design the northern half of Golden Gem Road, which essentially represents the part of the road which is in the KPI. And we are required to bring that up to city standards. As Jake said, we went and met with Orange County and for all intents and purposes, they said, you know, all we had in mind was throwing down a little asphalt and maybe putting a sidewalk. So if that is their idea of a better and safer road for the southern half, they can do that. There's no guarantee they're going to give us the road, but Jake has written agreement and we're asking for the northern half.
So, and, and thank you for detailing that too, but it was during those approval processes, I'm fairly certain the developer, the attorney, agreed that, yes, we're renovating or we're redoing that road that's, that fronts our Golden Gem, or that fronts Golden Gem, and I think that was inclusive of those new eight or five?
They'll, they'll be making some slight modifications. They'll be putting in the turn lanes, making the road safer, widening out a little bit. But we, the city, is redesigning it to make it into, in places, a three-lane segment, a trail, and streetlights and other amenities along the road. It's, it's, it's too much, I can't technically make them do it because there's capacity on the road and you can't force a developer to do something. So their contribution is right away and interim improvements.
So did that change?
No, it's, it's always been that way, that they weren't, they weren't going to totally, we're going to rebuild the road. The, the big thing up there is the road does this, and it goes down. This is the way Orange County constructed it. There is a, a terrible sight distance issue, and, and also the road is kind of narrow. The, the big expense on the road is to flatten it out and make it safer and to add the curb and gutter, the ponds. And they're not doing all that stuff. They're just making it safer with the turn lanes, widening out a little bit. We'll come back to the rest of it.
Commissioner Nesta's point, I do have that recollection, but I think it was always caveated with, at the time of the transportation agreement or whatever document was coming, forthcoming. But I do, I do recollect what you're talking about. Because we, we asked those pointed questions, but again, it always seemed like there was a caveat to it to say, subject to whatever the transportation agreement was that was going to be forthcoming. I'm assuming this is it.
Well, there's another agreement Jake's going to talk about.
The other agreement is the, the one that actually talks about their right-of-way obligations is the one that's next, and it's, it's tied into this, but it's not this agreement. The, I'm not sure, requiring them to make improvements on Golden Gem Road would also have the problem of requiring the, them to make improvements to a road that we don't have control over and they don't have control over. Obviously, we could, we could try something along those lines, but I didn't, I wasn't aware of any promises that they would, that they would make improvements to Golden Gem Road. They're present, I'm not sure if they have any recollection that they could, or anything that they could tell us about.
Commissioners, when the Wild Oaks project came through, there was a list of improvements that were going to be made and dedications made. Of those, it was the, I, oh, let me introduce myself. Jonathan Hules with the Louslaw Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando.
Can you speak just a little louder, Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Let me talk into the microphone. When Wild Oaks came through for its original major development plan approval and rezoning to mixed-use Kelly Park interchange, there, there was a discussion during the public hearing of all of the dedications and improvements that would be made as part of that project. And there was discussion with you all about the dedication of right-of-way along Golden Gem. But there was also, much like is occurring now, was the limitations with that road and its current jurisdictional format, which is with it, with the county. And that, that there's still steps that need to take place with that. And whether that's the city taking over the operational and jurisdictional control of that road, or the county coming to the table and, and being a partner with it, needs to happen. Without that, our, our hands are somewhat tied as, and, and so what this two agreements do is take it as far as it can. I'll tell you, that improvements in the future has taken a step forward by the recent annexation and inclusion of the properties that are going to be, are located on the farther down Golden Gem. I don't know where the laser is. And that these properties are now subject to the Wild Oaks Development Agreement, which is the next item on your agenda, they will also be obligated to dedicate that right-of-way. So it, it's a significant chunk now of the right-of-way that'll at least be in place. Every other road that has been identified for improvement by the city, that's within the city's control, is being addressed for improvement in, in these agreements.
Okay. Thank you.
On that point, to that end, Mr. McKemme's right, right? The Golden Gem Road has to, the outcome has to be its improvement from Ponkin all the way up to this development. Because now I'll, I'll argue that, from where I live and a good majority of the people on the east side of Plymouth Sorento, Plymouth Sorento will be the, the preferred method of getting up there. But, but still, at the end of the day, it's, it's a critical piece of the overall network that we're trying to achieve with this pioneering agreement, right? I mean, the whole streets up there in red are, to Mr. Hitt's point, we've talked about this before, and yours, is to create the interconnectivity inside. Because, again, people that are up by that weird lemon-looking circle up in the northwest section, they're not going to have to get on Onditch or go down Round Lake or whatever to get to the commercial that's going to be abutting that to the south on Kelly Park. They can go within that internal network of systems. That's why it's a benefit to us as a city. But Golden Gem is just this, it's this, it's this, this headache right now, and we've just got to get it fixed. Like, and I'm not, and I'm not looking at you, Mr. Hules, to solve that entirely. It's, it's just, the outcome is Golden Gem just needs to be approved because it's just going to benefit your, your client's development as well as the points north.
And we completely agree. I mean, we view this pioneer agreement as establishing the framework. I mean, there's a lot of other properties here that are not included with, with, in its scope that are likely eventually going to come to the table and want to develop and be looked upon to continue on this framework. And there are, you know, Golden Gem's going to be one of those projects. It's just, it's not in the position today to be able to specifically address it and include those improvements in this scope.
The, the value statement for me, just so that I can kind of talk to the residents here, is, you know, what this does is it secures a certain outcome. You know, oftentimes, we're doing development by development. We talk about, oh, it's going to connect to this, or it's going to connect to that. But we really don't talk about it at a macro level like this. You know, anytime a resident's going to come up to me and say, hey, you got all this development up there, oh, oh, by the way, here's the plan. Here's what's going to happen with this road, at what time, and what's involved in, in the scope of what we're doing here. And so that, I, I find value in that because at least I'm able to talk to our, our residents in that manner. So, and again, it, it becomes an easier, more efficient process for staff because they're not having to individually negotiate terms with every single one of these very large developments. I mean, these are not small, little 15-home neighborhoods. These are massive mixed-use developments, so.
Any other questions?
Just a brief word on Golden Gem. The, I'm, I currently have, it's almost ready to bring to the council or to send to the county, proposed agreements basically transferring jurisdiction to the, to the city. Whether or not the, you all want to try to get the, how much you want to take, because my impression from the county is they'll give you all of it if you don't take, if you pay for all of it. That was my impression. So.
I mean, that's the thing, they're just, they're not dealing in good faith. I mean, they really aren't.
They, basically, they have a priority, to them, it seems. They have a priority list and Golden Gem isn't on it, or is down the list.
Yeah, I mean, and there's got to be some middle ground there. I mean, who from the staff level, from city perspective, is going and saying, hey?
We, we get with them.
But here's, okay, if we were to take that over, here's the maintenance costs that you are now erasing from your PNL, and that we're going to take on long-term. So there's a certain value that we're saving the county in order to do that. And like I said before, can't have your cake and eat it too. I mean, when, when that transportation tax was trying to be passed, if you went up to the website, our basic capital improvement plan on all the roads was then leveraged to put on that Orange County site to try and sell that tax. So let's, let's all come together in good faith and realize that it's going to cost some money on both sides to do this thing. But at the end of the day, it's going to be a good product for the people that are investing in this from a development perspective and the sanity of our drivers within the City of Apopka. But I, I will hope we can get, let's get to the table with that board or something, some joint thing that it's very targeted in our approach.
I'd be, I'd be happy, I mean, I'd be happy to help with that.
We, we had, we had a meeting with the, all the players. I mean, we had a meeting in my, my conference room with all the players and.
I think it'd be advantageous to workshop this, have all, all of us in it as well, and, and maybe a little more momentum there.
You mean as the Golden Gems specifically, right?
That's, that's separate conversation.
Right. As for this agreement, I'm not sure whether you wanted to vote on this or wait until we've discussed the other agreement that's kind of tied to it first.
Let's, we just, we, I think we can go ahead and get this one done, and then we'll go to the, that's, everybody good? Okay, we?
What's, what's the spirit of the next one?
The next one is, so I don't, I didn't prepare a PowerPoint for this one, unfortunately, but it's basically, you know, the Kelly Park VB Development already had a development agreement in place, and they are moving quickly on development. And so this is basically bringing over that framework from the pioneering agreement to that development. This is an actual approval of the way that they're setting out their roads. So for example, it is an agreement that they're getting impact fee credits for these roads as with the, as with the pioneering agreement. It is giving them impact fee credits for the, the costs that they've already undertaken as to these roads that are creditable, which not all of them are, but the ones that are creditable. And then it sets out that they can't open, they can't get a CO for this property down here until Sadler is completed, and they can't get a CO for the properties that are abutting Effie, this extension of Effie, until Effie is completed. So that, that's kind of how they, it basically enacts the timeframes that we were discussing, except in this case, they're going to be done much sooner.
Did you have, where are you going?
No, I was just going to, because it's not written up there. You know, we phase roads all the time. We are phasing Kelly Park Road, and you can contemplate Golden Gem being the same thing. We're just, we're phasing it. We're doing the, the, the part that needs to be done the most first. And we can work with Orange County to figure out what to do about the, the southern piece. But there were some numbers thrown out earlier. They're absolutely incorrect. The road is a $10 to $13 million fix. That's just, that is just flat fact. It's not $750,000 or $800,000, ending up throw paint on the road, certainly not going to put a sidewalk and lights or a trail. So a lot of people will use that road, but they're not all residents of the city. They're coming from Lake County and, and, and Orange County. I, I think this is a good, a good start. Orange County doesn't really have any incentive to partner with us unless we do something like this, like do the northern half of the road and, and put, I don't want to say pressure, but convince them that they need to look at this again and, and share the cost. We're dropping almost $40 million into Coe-Popka Road. This one will be, our part is probably the most expensive part, $8 million. We're putting signals all over the city, and they're not helping us. So we need to look after ourselves and, and our roads. And, and this plan, these two agreements that are in front of you right now are going to benefit the city more than if we take our money and spend it more on county. They should, they should help us with their roads. So, you know, I, I don't feel like there's another solution right now for Golden Gem other than to do the, the northern part.
Yeah, and like I said, the value statement that has to be presented to the county is, from what I've read about the Wild Oaks development, it's going to be a premier site on that southwest corner of 429. So it's going to be Orange County residents, not just proper City of Apopka. So, I mean, it's advantageous for that whole road. And that, this isn't a you, Pam, I'm knocking any, what I'm just saying is that regardless of who's doing what, the outcome needs to be full capacity on Golden Gem.
It does, but we can start with this piece and then work our way down, however it turns out. Because I'm, I'm prepared right now to start the design on it. So the rec, there are. So, the rec, there are two, did we talk about both of them?
No. This Commissioner Becker asked about the nature of the other agreement before.
I just want people to have confidence that we knew what we were going to be contemplating next before we voted on the initial one, because it's kind of...
So, the recommended action is to approve the, it's titled roadway funding agreement for West Kelly Park Road. Okay.
Motion to approve the pioneering agreement for West Kelly Park Road. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. A motion to approve the transportation agreement for Wild Oaks.
Do you need to do public hearing?
Okay, anybody from the public wants to speak to that one?
Auburn McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. There's so much goes on here that a layperson like myself doesn't understand. All I'm trying to do is look for clarification and look to talk to you gentlemen and ladies here to let you see my perspective. Now, I can make comments that really aren't relevant tonight's discussion, so I'll attempt not to do that. However, on the Golden Gem Road, I'm trying to understand, the width of that road is about 16 feet just now. When it does have to be rehabilitated, or whatever you want to call it, my guess is you're going to need a 25% increase in the width. And at previous meetings, I was led to believe that impact fees are not available to use on resurfacing a road. But if a road requires to be reman, you know, more or less remanufactured, and I've argued for the fact that this is going to cost 13 or 14 million for a long time, the figures I quoted tonight, 8 million, were the facts that was stipulated here quite a while ago. But there's adequate funding from impact fees to do the whole of Golden Gem Road from the number of buildings you do, provided the whole road is increased by 25% width. It can come from impact fees. So I don't see why there seems to be such a problem. If you do adopt it, then what we're looking at just now, 3,000 homes on Golden Gem Road, maybe 4,000 at a push with the impact fees, that would allow you, the impact fees, to widen the whole road by 25%. And if you widen it by 25%, it's not just improving it, it's a remanufacture of the road, and it does, it does qualify under the impact fees. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the transportation agreement for Wild Oaks. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'm just going to take a quick break before jumping to this next one. Thank you, Commissioners.
What's he doing?
Break?
Oh, Mike, me. Do you need a break? Go ahead.
They were five foot eight or six feet by over thirteen feet. They were a really good sized balcony. And then the applicant, it also had the shorter sill type balconies with the rails on those. So if that gets approved by the majority of you, what DRC, what I would recommend with DRC, they did submit their construction site plan. We had our first meeting with that this morning. And there were two issues. One was the comprehensive plan requirement for permeable surface parking for twenty percent of the parking spaces, anything over one hundred. And then there was also some questions regarding the stormwater drainage size to make sure that that was adequate to hold those, the amount of stormwater that would be discharged from the site. The reason those did come up is because it is a construction site plan. I did verify this with engineering. The major development plan does not get into the weeds of all the engineering portion of a development plan until it gets to the construction site plan. Hence, this is also the more expensive portion of the development plan itself. So that's, I found that out. So with
I don't know if that's being shown to the public. What's on the screen? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh.
I just didn't want the public to be confused as us looking at this.
Looking at this versus the national plan, I'm sorry, too. So that being the case, what staff feels that is, you know, those are things that I believe we can work out after the main approval of the construction site plan, which we can actually bring back to DRC next week. And basically, we would approve the construction site plan with the provision that these requirements are addressed prior to July first, 2023. In other words, they can, we can get the approval for the construction site plan based on those two items. And then that way, they can also take into account the current transportation fees for, prior to the July first deadline where they would end up increasing. And that would actually, we, I did a quick figure, that actually increased the cost for the applicant by about a little over $500,000. So that's a, it's a savings for them. So in addition, building plans had been submitted for, originally for a review, however, there was no building application, building permit applications of that, they would also have to submit so that we can officially do the building plan review for the, for the building plans themselves. So that way, basically, we're back on track to, for that July first, and CSP would end up getting any approval, and we could get on with this development.
Any questions for Jim?
Well, I just want to reiterate the timeline again here. So we, we as commissioners got the agenda packet Friday afternoon, five o'clock, or just before five. This agenda item didn't have any supporting documentation with it. We got a notation at 5:52 yesterday talking about how Agenda Four, Business Item Four, was taken off the agenda, the amphitheater naming rights. And I just happened to relook at that business item, and now the settlement was attached to it. So I sent you a note, an email earlier today, asking who wrote, who authored the agreement? Because I thought it was a settlement agreement from the applicant to us. I didn't realize it was staff or people representing the city that created the settlement agreement for us to contemplate. And then my question was, did anybody work in partnership with the applicant? Because it seems like a colossal waste of time if we come up with some settlement agreement that the other party's not even willing to stipulate. Like, and then at 4:06 today is the email that you just referenced, where you included the counter from whoever, I don't, I didn't have time to study it. We had CRA at six.
Yep.
So all the other stuff in there, I kind of got lost in the shuffle because, you know, I'm not going to try and make a decision two hours before a meeting starts. And then two, for their, to recommend, staff is recommending with the full council here tonight to revoke, to revote regarding the balcony issue as presented in the CSP. Like, how would the public know that we're doing that? Like, I'm just lost on this piece of business in terms of the settlement.
Well, at the last, basically, you don't have to worry about the settlement is what I'm trying to get through. Because the, with, with the way that I've got it planned out is that you do the revote because all of you are here at this, at this stage. And quite frankly, I believe we got the votes to accept the balconies the way they've already been presented. So with that vote, then what we would end up doing is processing the conditional use permit, I keep saying conditional, the construction site plan as presented with the balconies as, as originally submitted. And we would bring that back to the DRC next week for approval with those two items to be worked out.
Why don't we have our special counsel here?
The way, the way Mr. Noah put it is that this is something that, at least at this stage, that we can work out at a, at a formal meeting. We don't have to do a shade meeting in order to be able to do that, or in order to do this. But again, if we don't have an agreement that, that we can both agree on, the way I'm looking at it is, what I had proposed is, it doesn't, it would almost be as if we don't have a, we didn't have a stipulated settlement agreement to even worry about. I'm letting you know that I believe that we can get this through staff and not have to have any more issues. I'd consider it a win. That's, that's, we get this thing going.
And it's Doug Noah, our counsel with the league, is in full agreement. I mean, we've been at this all over the weekend. I know Jim's had three or four calls with Doug Noah, and I've had some, and Patrick and Doug, and so we've had numerous conversations, and here we are. And so trying to resolve this issue, and so if we, if we can just go back and approve the motion that failed on a two-two tie, then the settlement agreement is moot.
So are you recommending that you're okay with the settlement agreement being moot? I, I'm sorry, I'm being dense.
What I'm recommending is What I'm recommending is you take the settlement agreement that was sent to you, and then the one that was the edited version. Put it off to the side. The email that I just read you. Don't worry about it. Take it off, take it off, put it off to the side. What I've read to you and what I emailed you, that's what I believe we can do without having to worry about any type of an agreement. We just handle it, take care of it at staff level, and we're done.
Based on the, exactly the same.
But did I hear you correctly that you want to now approve what was?
A two-two
A two-two tie?
Correct.
Last meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason is, we want to, we want to get this past us. We want to get going, and we've had enough
But we don't need an official vote from the council for this, correct?
What, what I, what we did at the last meeting was do a vote regarding the balcony. What I would like is a majority of the, of the city council, which is what we were trying to do last meeting, but we couldn't because we, Mr. Smith was out of town. So if we get a majority, that kind of sends the message to staff, we can proceed the way I'd outlined. And then we're done.
So this is, no, I'm just, I don't know.
Put it off to the side, fold it in half and put it somewhere else.
Okay, so this is not going to be talked about, included?
No.
Refused to?
Let's see if we don't get, no.
Okay. So here I am, this will go in the shredder.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so we've got kind of a, what we're looking for is a motion. So anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to reconsider Business Item Number One from the June seventh, 2023 City Council Meeting before the full council to resolve the outstanding issue in lieu of the proposed settlement agreement to be discussed.
I'm going to make the motion because I've been consistent.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. So four to one passes.
I thought you just said that you wanted staff to approve it.
It's fun games, isn't it?
It's a fun
Just keep moving on.
You literally just said you wanted to approve it.
I want to get it done.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean I agree with it.
Let's just keep moving.
Okay. I just want to say that I did go to the DRC meeting this morning.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Ordinance number 3008.
Okay, wait a minute, let me, let me go back to this for a minute. Six twenty
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Four to one.
Ordinance number 3008. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to industrial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of US 441 and Lakeview Drive, owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC, comprising 4.88 acres more or less, providing for separability conflicts and ineffective date.
What are they doing with my agenda?
No changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3008.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number 3009.
Ordinance number 3009. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from C core, commercial corridor to IL, light industrial, for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of US 441 and Lakeview Drive, owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC, comprising 4.88 acres more or less, providing for separability conflicts and ineffective date.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3009. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-15, Blanche.
Resolution 2023-15. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Resolution number 2023-15 is before you. It pertains to a developer agreement between the City of Apopka and Cypress Business Park LLC and American Land Apopka Industrial LLC. This is reimbursement of, for some improvements that were made on Highway 441 and Wesley Road, intersection improvements and traffic signal. These, this amount was not included in the budget for reimbursement, and this amendment will allow it to be in the budget and make that payment to that developer.
Okay, any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2013-15.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-16.
Resolution 2023-16. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, designating the Sanovis Bank as the city depository, designating the accounts to be maintained by the city, designating officials who are authorized to sign checks, notes, drafts, bills of exchange, monies, acceptance, orders, and other items of any kind, designating officials who are authorized to make endorsements, designating officials authorized to borrow money, setting method of notice of change in officials, establishing an effective date.
Blanche?
Yes, again, the resolution number 2023-16. Due to the changes in city staff and city council, staff is requesting to update the signature cards with our primary bank, Sanovis, as indicated in the attached resolution.
Any questions for Blanche?
Shouldn't we be doing this in all the accounts?
No, Sanovis is our only account that we write checks on. They're our primary bank.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2013-16.
Twenty twenty-one. Three dash sixteen.
Twenty, I'm sorry, 2023-16. Again, a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Were they supposed to have that tonight?
Yeah, we're trying to get signatures tonight. If we can, if we can get the resolution signed tonight.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll sign it, yep.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Nesta, did you send your
Yeah, this way, because you have us all here tonight.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Blanche. Okay. City Council reports, Mr. Nesta.
Let's just get right to it. Where are we at with the FIRE RFP?
Do you know, Blanche?
It's in draft.
It's in draft?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's in drafting, and so
It's being under review right now, but we're working on
What's like an expected timeline for us to be able to see that live?
The release, I think we should have something to you by tomorrow or Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Look forward to seeing it? Thank you. The next one, obviously, let's discuss city attorney, and that we don't have one, obviously. How are we moving forward with this?
We've got somebody we've kind of, Joe, I want you to come, because maybe a couple we've got somebody that we probably, we're looking for a couple of things from him. He's deficient in a couple of areas that obviously are important to the city, so we're trying to come up with a, some kind of an efficient way of getting
Right, he's deficient in, in one area, which is planning. So we're coming up with a plan for him to be, to become familiar with that and educated in that area. He knows some, but not as much as we'd like. So he's coming up, so he's coming up with a plan with that, so we're going to review that. All other areas, very good. And we're hoping on some other applicants, so we can go forward there with that, but he's promising.
Is the former city attorney a part of this process at all? Has he met or spoken to any of the applicants?
He helped interview the applicants
Okay.
before all this happened, so
When you say before, or what happened?
I mean, I'm not going to give you a date. I have to go back and look at my calendar, so
Before he quit, before we fired him?
Before, before the
Three, four weeks ago? Three, four weeks ago?
Something like that, yeah. I mean, I could look at my calendar and give you the exact dates, but I'm not going to commit to a exact date.
Okay, I appreciate
But with that, with that being said, yes, he, he did help with that, excuse me, process. So, and then with the, along the other line, with the separation agreement, I'm not sure about the, I know you have a copy of the separation agreement. So you know the stipulations of this. And the mayor got a couple of things wrong. There was, it was, it wasn't July 3rd, it's July 7th. And there is a, it wasn't 10 weeks, it's 13 weeks at the end of July 7th, so
So the question I want to ask regarding the attorney is, when he resigned, he tenured his resignation, when was that agreement? Was that in place, or was that created?
From my understanding, and I can't, I can't answer everything that you're asking, but from my understanding, that agreement was being discussed that day or before. I believe there was something in the worksheet, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, I don't, I don't, I'm always involved in those discussions, but what, what bothered about was I was processing the separation in the system, and I got, you know, his resignation letter and a separation agreement, but the separation agreement wasn't signed. So unknowns to me, it was still being discussed.
Who gets afforded separation agreements within the city? Do you have to a certain level, or do you have to, what constitutes
No, anybody could get a separation agreement, however, there, there have been, after, after this was discovered, there have been several that have gotten separation agreements. I think, I think there were five, if I'm not mistaken, it could be four. I looked them up. They, most of them, or actually, all of them had over 20 years of service. Three of them were afforded the opportunity to retire, and one was separated. But they all got 20 weeks of separation pay.
But like, just walk me through, just a generic scenario. If a director terminated one of their subordinates, would they typically enter into a separation agreement?
It depends, but typically, no. If it, if it was a subordinate, but it could, it could happen, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, it depends on the situation.
And if someone voluntarily resigned, there would be no need to enter into a separation agreement?
I've seen separation agreements with, you know, voluntary resignations, and I've seen them with, you know, forced separations. So to say, you know, a cookie cutter thing, no, I can't tell you that.
There's no, there's no standard protocol around separation agreements, is that what we're saying?
Not, not really, no.
And who wrote, did you write the separation agreement?
No, I did not.
Do we have outside council do that?
I don't know who did it.
No.
Who wrote it?
Michael did. It's a standard agreement, it's a standard separation agreement.
Well, that's, I mean, that's not unusual, we still have to approve it. I mean, you know, it's
Say that again, you still have to what?
I said, that's not unusual, we still have to approve the separation agreement. We have to agree upon, it's an agreement, so you have to agree upon it.
Who agrees upon it? I mean, how does that come to be? When you do the separation agreement, who sits around and says yes?
So it could be, well, it could be several people, it could be determined by the mayor who sits around and discusses this. It's usually myself. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to include me, it doesn't have to include anybody, it could be just the mayor that decides that.
And Chuck was in
Chuck, yeah, in this instance, it was, it was myself, it was Chuck Bavrick, who's the acting city administrator. And there were various things that were discussed about
I mean, even here where the mayor had hired this, I don't know who this attorney is, but hiring or firing the city attorney and city clerk requires an independent action of the mayor and city council acting concurrently. So does that include the separation agreement?
Well, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't, I can't give you a definite on that.
The thing, I think we're all stuck on is that he resigned publicly, then it was said again that he was no longer working.
Well, and I think
And we found out that he was contracted and is still working, and even today, he's still working, and we're still consulting with him.
I under, yeah, I understand that.
So it's very convoluted, I mean, I
Yes, I understand that, but unknowns to, I mean, there was, there was a separation agreement that was being, that was drafted. We did not know that that had not been concluded, and I think the mayor was still contemplating that, he hadn't signed it yet. And if you read, and I'm sure you've read Michael's separation letter, that it, it does stipulate in there that it was not voluntary. There was a piece in there where he says it was, it was a, I can't put words in it because I don't have it in front of me, but it wasn't a voluntary, or deemed a voluntary, according to Michael. So all these different variables come into play.
And that's inaccurate, because it was voluntary, he chose to quit after we fired him.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, but when you read the letter, resignation letter
Which I have.
It may not, yeah, okay.
Speaking about being outside of the, the charter itself, he speaks about that. So he still resigned, you can't quit and say, well, it's not my fault, that I didn't want to resign, you guys made me resign.
Yeah, I understand, and as I said before, I've seen separation agreements come after the resignation, I've seen them come before, I've seen them come during the process.
Have you seen them come three weeks after? It's the most bizarre thing I've seen.
Well
And, and Mayor, you actively lied to us up here then. I specifically asked, is he still employed with the city? Nope, as of 1:30 today, he is not. So I don't, again, it goes back to the ethics of why we were elected. We need to be doing what's right for the people and leading with ethics. This is unethical on a grand scale. And again, I think this goes so much deeper than, I think it's a violation of our city charter as well. I just can't believe we're still, we're still making $2,880 and 63 cents payments every Friday to somebody that quit. So I, I would like to stop those payments as he quit, and then he's also getting around $35,000, $37,000 to quit. Commissioner Smith, do you, what do you feel about this?
Well, I was here the last city council meeting, so I didn't know all this even took place. And I wasn't aware that the attorney was still working. I thought that when he resigned, he resigned. And then I heard someone say that he was under contract, and then you say he's still getting paid, so is he under contract, are you still on salary?
He didn't have a contract.
Okay, I just heard somebody say that he's under contract, so I thought maybe there was some kind of separate agreement that was being done, so he was still on the salary.
I don't know where that came from.
Okay. So, so I wasn't aware that we still had an attorney, because I hadn't seen him since the day he resigned until tonight, when Commissioner Nesta mentioned it, and so I was just, I was lost, I was in awe.
So we're continuing to pay somebody that none of the commissioners knew still worked here, that he's supposed to be serving at our pleasure. I don't, I don't know what the correct word is for that, it seems like theft. Again, this is a big deal, I can't emphasize it enough, so but I don't know if we get some type of special counsel to come in and figure out as to what laws have been broken with this. Because it's a big deal. It's ethically wrong, it's morally wrong, and you're not doing the will of the council at all.
Well, I will say that when we took the vote initially to fire him, I voted with the mayor not to fire him, and according to the charter, the mayor has to vote to fire him along with the majority of the council. So that's why we really didn't fire him, he resigned, okay? So, so that's what took place. And initially, we voted four to one to hire an outside counsel to determine what the charter initially meant. But after he resigned, we felt there was no need to do that.
Correct, and more specifically, when we had that meeting, it was, here's an attorney who's agreed to represent us if we go the litigation route. However, the other option was to ask the Attorney General if she would render an opinion, because going out to her side, there's clear instruction there that typically, the Attorney General will not like to get into individual, like if me and Mr. Rodriguez had our little thing, and nobody else on this council had an agreement or had an issue, and it was just me, the Attorney General's not going to waste her time looking at a one-on-one type of thing. But it brings more weight when a council makes a decision, interpretation of our charter in a majority fashion, and then you actually provide the meeting minutes articulating that, then packaged along with, Mr. Rodriguez would have had an opportunity to have his rebuttal along with that package to deliver to the Attorney General to render the decision. And so we were all, we all had consensus up here that we would honor what the Attorney General would say.
Correct.
And it's that point, after that conversation, that Mr. Rodriguez said that he was voluntarily resigning. And so there was
He said there was no need, right.
At that point.
Correct.
And I, you know, when you, when you, when you say that I resigned without any sort of other stipulation And I, you know, when you, when you, when you say that I resigned without any sort of other stipulation, especially date certain, that, that means effective now. And then even, even if we got past that, if you are, the mayor, to Commissioner Nesta's point, said on record in minutes, yeah, he's done as of today, not employed as of today. So, got to take ownership for your words.
Well, I'll be looking deeper into this and figuring out kind of next steps and I'll present something at the next council of how we can proceed. But that's my city council report.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm glad to be back. I did go to Africa with some students to chaperone for an educational experience and in the midst of the chaperone, I was educated as well. So it was a great, great experience and so I appreciate the fact that I was given the opportunity to have an excused absence from the city council meeting to do that. But also, I remember at the last council meeting we had, we had several months of expense reports. It was quite a bit to go through at one time, so I would like to suggest or recommend that we have quarterly expenses report of the budget actual rather than seven or eight months at one time.
Well, so I, well.
I think what he's recommending is the report comes on a quarterly basis instead of a monthly basis. In other words, as of June, as of March, as of September and as of December. You still have all the information, but instead of bringing it every month, bring it quarterly.
We'd have to change our policy then because our policy specifically states that it's monthly.
It does, it does.
We haven't been getting it, but now Mr. Sherman has been keeping up on it. So the policy specifically states that, so we have to change our policy if that's the case.
Yes, and with the, we can do that.
Would that be more efficient for you?
Yes, it would be more efficient for me to be quarterly, yes, sir.
But again, I mean, to me, to me, to me, like, financial reporting is just table stake stuff, right? I mean, to get, are you talking about the expense to actual or budget before? The one that was included in the consent agenda?
Can we do a variance analysis, you know, as well? That's the time consuming part.
Like, for example, and I find it very valuable to see on a monthly basis because, again, when you go department by department, you know, we're seven months into the fiscal year, right? So technically, if you did straight line expense, we should be burning 58% of our budget right now. And so when you look at department by department, some are burning right around that, that mark. You know, the mayor's office, the attorney's office, they're all burning IT. Rob, sorry, man, but you're like 61% to plan, you're burning hot. But, you know, on some of the departments, it's much lower than where they should be right now. And so I want to make sure that if that's the narrative and people are up here saying, hey, we need staff and they are only burning 40% to plan when they should be at 58%, okay, we shouldn't have any qualms about, okay, let's make an investment to do what we need to be doing. And if we have to wait for that on a quarterly basis, we can't help you make those decisions.
You get the budget, I can share with you the ones that I was doing before for the departments, which is the same information, without the variance analysis.
Without the what?
The variance analysis.
The lead in.
The narrative, yes. But that still gives you the budget actual with those percentages. It's just, it's just a request.
I know it's extra work, but the benefit it allows us, the insights that is on the variance analysis, again, you may have departments that are more seasonal in their spend. So if they are only burning 25% of their budget right now when they should have 58%, there may be capital expenditures that they're making next month that would increase that to 75%. And so without that knowledge, again, it just helps us to make easier decisions up here to say, hey, let's not squabble over $4,000 when you've got, like case in point, the CRA budget. I mean, holy cow, that's a $4 million budget, you're projecting it to spend 21K.
Yeah, I understand, and as I just mentioned, the same information is in that monthly report that goes to the department that I had shared with you in the beginning before we got to this type of report. And in the past, you did not get a variance analysis, you did not get a narrative, you just got that same comparison.
I'll go with the, I mean, the will of council, obviously, but I find value in it. That's just me. But it sounds like we have to unless we change the policy.
Correct.
So for now, it's monthly until.
I mean, you can change it and we can update the policy accordingly. It's just in the budget policy.
Like the other commissioners want, they want the monthly report, so.
It's your, it's whatever you need, okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I want to start on a positive note. And I sent this to Chief Willems earlier or last week. So I just want to read the note publicly because I'd like to recognize his team. And so I'll just read it word for word. Chief Willems, I wanted to relay my thanks and recognition for members of your department for their response to an emergency call. As I was leaving an event at Steffi's Pub yesterday evening, or it was last week, I witnessed a woman trip over a parking space curb and fell face first into the sidewalk curb. The woman did extensive damage to her mouth, teeth and nose and we were unsure if there were other injuries. We called 911 and AFD arrived on scene shortly thereafter. The woman was audibly and visibly traumatized by the accident, but your team responded with professional grace that led to a very calming and reassuring environment for the woman victim and the family member that was with her. I would like to recognize and say a big thank you to the following personnel and I will be sure to make public recognition during my time at our next city council meeting. And those members are Lieutenant Ryan Beggs, Engineer Niall Sturm, EMT Michael Atkins, Medic Ryan Hovick, EMT Anaya Coffey and EMT Jordan Canizera. I know they would see this as a routine call, but I saw it as yet another example of the professionals and great men and women whose staff are to fire, or staff our fire department, bringing calm to crisis. Thank you, regards, Kyle Becker. But I just wanted to thank your team again. I can't stand looking at bodily fluids without getting sick to my stomach. I've got the weakest stomach on demand and how they handle those, those scenes is pretty, pretty amazing. So, thank you to the team. RFP, Commissioner Nesta touched on attorney language, Commissioner Nesta touched on. The, Mayor, you made a comment earlier around public services when Norret was talking on what changes happened there. I thought you mentioned something there, but him coming up is, like, I'm conflicted because I hear his, his comments when he's talking during a public comment and it's my understanding that, and I don't know if the commissioner's going to memo from public services staff?
About the.
About Mr. Badoo.
Say that, Bill?
About Mr. Badoo.
A vote of confidence?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did.
I didn't. Check your emails. Or maybe it was actually a letter that we got.
Well, so it was my understanding that the, that the memo was placed in the commissioner mailboxes, but I never got it, I received it through a different channel.
Oh, I got it.
But I got the memo, so I'm, I'm curious as to why it was removed from the commissioner mailboxes.
Oh, I got it.
Oh, I didn't get it. I didn't, is it in my mailbox now or?
I don't check your mailbox. No, it was, this was probably months ago.
Oh, no, I never got it.
Maybe.
I never got it.
More than two months ago, I don't know exactly.
Just received it within the last week.
You did?
But in all fairness to the situation, it was a memo by multiple people within the public services department with a vote of confidence for Mr. Badoo. So I'm cur, again, there's, we can't solve this up here. I mean, administrative issues that are happening at the staff level, I guess, but.
Okay, I'm really in another, because I never even saw this memo. And it was removed, it was placed in the mailbox but removed?
Yes.
Do you have that memo? Commissioner Nesta, do you have that memo?
He's digging.
And you have that memo? Do you have it now?
I don't have it with me, I sure brought it. But I just wanted to make sure that all parties were aware of all sides of that conversation, so, that's it.
I'm really in the dark now.
But anyway, I did want to read a remark into the record and so I'll just crack at it. Madam Clerk, please accept this letter as a matter of official public record. Today, I announce my intentions not to seek reelection in the upcoming 2024 Apopka municipal election. As such, please treat this letter as my confirmation my term will end at the installment of the next duly elected Commissioner of Seat 3. The timing of this letter is my attempt to ensure my actions and assertive nature of rhetoric over the remainder of my term is not misconstrued as politically motivated, a personal vendetta or otherwise misguided intent going into critical meetings regarding our budget and other important business impacting the great men and women out in the field who make this city run daily. I've served in this position knowing my opinions, my approach and my votes would not be viewed favorably by all people all the time. I welcome constructive criticism, I can tolerate unconstructive criticism and even disrespect of my name as it relates to the position in which I serve. However, I have simply asked the public and my colleagues to afford me the opportunity to provide my side of the issue or question at hand based off my interpretation of fact in the best interest of our residents and employees. It is with humbling honor that I again thank the people of Apopka for the opportunity and privilege to serve. With this eventual outcome, the honor of serving as Vice Mayor will go to the most senior commissioner, and that would be Commissioner Diane Velazquez. I have full confidence she will continue to serve and fight for the people and the frontline employees of Apopka with dignity and the respect they deserve. Deepest regards, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Kyle Becker of Apopka City Council, Seat 3.
I need a copy of that, I need a copy of everything.
Commissioner Velazquez?
I don't know on that note. First of all, I'm sad that you are choosing not to run again. It's, it's been a challenge sitting up here, it has been for each and every one of us. I'm really at a loss for words right now and I'm sorry to hear that. I think that you, you bring a lot of value. You certainly bring a value that helps us to understand the process a little better, especially financially and and you really have been a voice for the, for our residents.
It's not a decision I take lightly. I think the events tonight kind of further cement the fact. I will say that I've received veiled threats from people in the community lately that I don't take too kindly. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's family.
I know, absolutely. Okay.
All right. All right, with that, Mayor's report, a couple of upcoming AFD events, just so it'll go out to you tomorrow in an email as well. But I just spoke with the fire department and two events to celebrate Austin Duran's life. In celebration of his life, Austin Duran, the fire department will be hosting two separate events over the next two months. The first event will be a joint effort with the Apopka Fire Department and the Apopka Professional Firefighters Local 5293. And they will be hosting a small public community candlelight vigil at Austin's memorial site adjacent to the Butler Building across from Fire Station 1 on June 30th, 2023, scheduled to begin at 7:30 PM. The second event will be a private ceremony for the Apopka Fire Department and the Duran family only, and that will take place on July 15th. I don't have a time, but it's for them alone. Friday, we swore in seven new firefighters Friday night. It's a great event. Let's see, July 4th celebration, Tuesday, July 4th. Activities begin at 6:00 PM, music at 7:00, fireworks at 9:00. We'll have balloon artistry, bounce houses, face painting, fireworks, food, music by my generation. And last, we had a great event, I know Commissioner Velazquez was there. The Frank Carlton renovations were really, I tell you, our, Radley and AJ, they really did this right. You can't believe how, how the renovations have taken that from a, you know, a tired 30-year-old building to something that we all should be proud of. So a great, a great day for, we had probably 7,500 little old ladies out there doing their exercise and so it was, it was a great day to, to be there. And Frank Carlton drove all the way down from the Panhandle to be with us, so it was a really neat deal. So with that.